I would like to call this workshop to order. This is the March 9, 2022 workshop in the city of Dunellen. It is now 5:35. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you all continue to remain standing? Is there anyone that is with us today that would like to come up and give a short prayer?
Good evening. Did you guys miss me last month? Let's pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for your goodness, your grace, and your mercy. Father, I pray your blessing over this meeting this evening, that you grant this council knowledge, wisdom, and discernment in regards to the decisions they have to make. Father, I just want to thank you for all that you've been doing in this city, seen and unseen. Father, I pray in Jesus' name for more, for more of you and less of us. Amen.
Okay, everyone, please be seated. Ms. Odom, proof of publication. Oh, call first, yes, absolutely.
Ms. White.
President.
Vice Mayor Henshaw.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Councilwoman Kenny.
Here.
Councilwoman Hobbit.
Yes.
Jan Smith, Finance Officer.
Chief McQuaid.
Here.
Troy Slidere, Public Works Manager.
Here.
Georgina, Community Development Manager.
Here.
Here.
Julie Danowski, Rikers Clerk.
Lieutenant Yox.
Michelle Leonard, Assistant Clerk.
Here.
I got you. Andrew Hand, City Attorney.
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website and City Hall Bulletin Board on Wednesday, March 2, 2022.
Thank you very much. Want to welcome everyone who's in attendance tonight. Thank you for coming. This is your opportunity to participate in the governance of the city of Dunellen. For those of you that are not quite familiar with the format, this is the workshop. This is basically listening to an open discussion of the council, talking about ideas, projects, suggestions, issues that are in front of us and maybe in front of us in the future. It also allows the public the opportunity to speak on two occasions to these issues or any issues that you want. It's an excellent opportunity to bring to council's attention things that you have noticed that maybe we have not, or to offer support, or to offer your issues with certain things that are ongoing. The council is here to listen, so you have an opportunity to speak right at the beginning of the meeting, which is where we're going, and then at the conclusion of the meeting, which I find is interesting, those that hang in and stay the entire time. You can make comments again after you've listened to some of the discussion of council. To me, it's a very wholesome and open way of doing business. So right now, we're going to Agenda Item Number One, Public Comment. There are no parameters on what you can speak to at this time. You can speak to the agenda, or you can speak to any other item. One thing I would ask is, are there people that do listen to these meetings via Zoom? And when you do speak, please speak into the microphones, speak loudly and clearly, because people actually do listen to these things, and they are recorded, and we have transcripts that sometimes rely on what we can hear. So it's very important to speak. So with that said, Ms. Odom, do we have anybody who has signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Hmm?
No, sir.
No one to speak? Okay.
We signed up. We signed up at the end of the meeting. No. There's one at the beginning and one sheet for the end of the meeting.
Okay, well, don't worry. No, 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 no. There's no confusion. You're going to get to speak. Wait, the sign-up is generally, or whoever signed up gets to speak first. And then after that is done, we go, anybody else wants to speak? So no one's going to get shut out here. So everybody relax. Just a little, little piccadillo, I think you call that, a piccadillo? Look that up. I haven't used that word very often. Okay. We will recognize anyone in the audience that would like to speak. Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry if I forgot on the sheet. It looked like there were two that were exactly the same, so I started on the left and anyway. My name is Susan Jones. I represent Rainbow Springs Art Gallery, which is at the corner of Cedar and Pennsylvania. My address is 9129 Southwest 190th Avenue Road in Dunellen, Florida. At least, that's my postal address. For the record, that information is captured when we sign in, so perhaps we don't have to repeat where we're from if we give the address when we sign in. Just an efficiency thought. I'm here to talk about Rainbow Springs Art Festival, which is really getting close. A week from this Saturday and Sunday, not this weekend, but the following one, we will be bringing 30 to 35, I think is the number now, artists in to the streets to show their original work. While some of them do craft, it's fine craft and fine art. And so this is a quality show where everyone's work has to be reviewed before they are admitted to participate. We do have a group that's offered to do music for free, which is wonderful, and we will have some food vendors, and we're hoping for long weather. So please, I hope you will all come out and join us. The general public is welcome and encouraged to come. And Mayor White, thank you so much for agreeing to open up the event for us. In the past, it has proven to be extremely good for neighboring businesses. In fact, one or two told us the last time we did the festival that it was, in fact, the best day of the year for their business. So we believe we're not only spreading cultural enlightenment, but we're helping other businesses as we do that, and a part of our mission is helping our community. We have a number of large and small businesses that are supporting us financially and with goods and services. Trent Snyder, the CPA locally, has been with us for many years. State Farm Insurance. Caldwell Banker was there from the beginning when we had no track record at all. Caldwell Banker Riverland Realty, I should say. Patsy and Company Salon, Great Expectations Realty, Grumbles House and Garden Shop, Donna Stained Glass, Mike Scott Plumbing, Bird Insurance, Akala Eye, Florida Mortgage. That list goes on, but those are some of those who stepped up early and in a significant way. So we are really indebted to our large and small business supporters. In March and April, we have a number of classes. The schedule is available online. The classroom in the back of our building is available for community groups, as we've been announced before, but I just want to repeat that in case there's a roadie group or Kiwanis group or a service group that's looking for space to meet. That can be arranged in advance. Are there any questions?
I have one.
Certainly.
How is business generally? Very interested in that. We all know COVID has been front and center for a couple of years. Seems like we're working our way through that at this point, so how's business compared to a year ago?
It's, it's better. It is definitely better. I can't give you an incremental amount. We're in the process of closing out, doing tax reports for the last year, and we changed our system at Midstream, so we've got two systems we're reconciling right now. But that said, we know that there's more traffic. We know that our classes are drawing people in who otherwise would not be coming in, and once they're there, they start looking at the art. We have one artist who's sold several pieces, very expensive pieces. So we know that there is a market for the high end as well as the lower-priced items. So we try to have a range of media. We have wood, glass, pottery, fabric, oils, pencil. I'm sure I'm forgetting something, but we are always looking for new members. They do have to be approved by the membership, but we have a good mix, and we find that people, once they do come in, they tend to come back. So I think we're going in the right direction with regard to getting past the COVID issue of everybody staying home.
Any other comments, questions, council?
I have a question. Musical entertainment?
Yes, well, there's a group that has volunteered to do it for free because they think they'll get other business out of it. So we've told them, fine. I think it's the same with the did last year.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, for the report. If the rest of the meeting goes this smoothly, we'll be in good shape, right? Okay. Mr. Bevart? Yes?
Phil Bevart, 9552 Southwest 192nd Court Road. I just wanted to take a minute. On the agenda tonight, there's an item, a resolution, that Andrew has written about Blue Run Park. What I'm going to talk about is something a little bit different. One of the requirements in the Blue Run Management Plan is we have to have signs posted throughout the park. That was going back to 2008. So what Mandy and I have been working on, she asked me to do, and I'm working with Troy, is we're going to redo the signs. The signs in the park now are resolutions. They are not ordinances, not the new ordinance. So what we have to do is we have to take the ordinance, which is many pages long, and put it into a sign that we can post in the park. And we're going to replace the resolution signs that are there with these new signs. And there's going to be three signs. One's going to be at the park, trailhead, Ange Trailhead. One's going to be over at the San Jose Trailhead, and one will be at the south end of the park. And we'll probably get a couple of spares because they may get vandalized. But what this has, I don't know if you'll have this in front of you, what I did is I went right down the ordinance, 2021-2, and basically copied the items out of the ordinance and put them in a form that we can put into a sign. We can't have a sign that's, you know, four feet wide with 30 pages of ordinance in it. So what we're going to do is we're going to, I see Andrew's going to his seat. So what we're going to do is hopefully you'll approve this, and if you look at it, it's the same thing. It's actually almost identical to what we had in 2008. It's the same rules. Park opens at sunrise, sunset. It does have a little more language on commercial language, which I think is what the resolution that's coming up tonight is. So I just wanted to give you a heads up, this is different than what you're going to be talking about later. This is a sign. And what I would do from here on, if you want me to, I would take it to vendor, get a quote, and with approval, which will come to you, and have it fabricated, and then Troy and I can work on getting it installed. So that would be the plan for getting our ordinance out there where the public can actually see it. One suggestion I made, and it's up to you all if you want to do it or not, is I would suggest in the beginning is maybe print some out and put them in the kiosk so people can pick them up and maybe take them home and have a little better chance to look at the actual ordinance. So that's, that's what I'm offering to do. If you want me to do it, I'd be happy to do it. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Ms. Odom, we will discuss this a little bit more this evening. Correct? Okay. Very good.
Kathy Dunn, 11386 Centric Drive. I too, it was like Ms. Jones looked at the list and thought the first one was for general comments, second one was for specific agenda-related comments, but I just, I just did, I signed up on the first one. Anyway, I'm here to comment about the CRA board, and as you know, this is one of my feelings, is that we should add citizens, and we should devote more than 30 minutes to the CRA meetings because they only happen one time a quarter, and it's a significant amount of disposable income for our city. It's a significant budget item, but that's for the future. For now, I would like to see us present a simplified treasury report at each CRA meeting occurring quarterly, with how much we have total, how much has been earmarked for, how much is going for staff salaries, and the balance available for dispersments. Also, when we sit in the audience, we listen to comments, and we really can't comment until the next time, so that's part of what I wanted to do tonight, is when it was said that our grant, that we have $100,000, is a gift, I feel that is an error because to me, it really is what the money is intended for, is to clean up the lights. And also, right now, we're having to make up for what we have not done in the past, which is have codes and code enforcement. So everybody has had no accountability for landlords and commercial businesses, and now we have to clean that up. So we have to spend the money to help them because right now, in a time of COVID and inflation, they're having a hard time making things meet. So if we want our town to look better, we also need to simplify the grant process, which Georgina has done a good job of doing, but three bids to me makes too many hoops to jump through. Two bids would be plenty. So I wish the CRA board would take a look at that so that we can get some of this money spent to make our town look better. The other thing I heard was that there's nothing we can do about commercial signage. When we see private entrepreneurs for pressure washing, stump grinding, solar roofs, all over town stuck on our easement, I think our city staff should pick that up, our public works, our code enforcement officer, pick that up without us having to report each sign. Other cities do that on a daily basis, and we did it during the election to pick up signs that were improperly placed. That is just, we don't want our town to be used as an advertisement for everybody that wants us to consign out there. I wanted to give you an example of what citizens are doing, especially citizens that are involved in the beautified Dunellen group. We have one citizen that noticed that the Lindy sign was dirty and ragged, so wrote a letter to the corporate, and they did a new sign. I'll finish in one second. The other thing is we had a private citizen go to the AT&amp;T Building and call corporate, and they had a property manager that was not doing their job, subsequently was fired, washed the building, cleaned up the landscape. So this is an example of what our citizens are doing. If the staff and the citizens work together, our town can reap the results positively. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dunn. To just clarify, signage of how we sign up at the council meetings is at the beginning of the meeting, you're limited to speaking to things that are not on the agenda, and then wait to the agenda if you want to speak to those items. So it's, causes a little confusion. Maybe we can do a little better job of letting everybody know the format of that. Seems like we have the, pretty much the same group here every month, and I think after a while, we feel everybody knows the rules maybe better than we do. So basically, the workshop, you get to speak to anything you want at the beginning and end. At a meeting, you can speak about anything you want at the beginning, and then if you want to speak to something on the agenda, you have to wait till that agenda item comes up. So is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, Brother Tom?
Tom Welch, P.O., Box 143, Dunellen, Florida. I too like to apologize for not reading the fine print. You know, as a man, I like looking at pictures, but I don't always like reading the fine print. Shot myself in the foot this evening, so my apologies. I just want to share something and then make a request. Back in October, I was asked to serve as a chaplain on the Dunellen Police Department, which I immediately didn't even have to think about. My answer was yes. As a result of serving as a chaplain, I've had the honor and the privilege to ride along with several of these officers, and I just want to share with council that these officers certainly have demonstrated a level of professionalism that is impeccable. These officers not only are diligent to enforce the laws of this community, but they make the extra effort to get out of the car and engage in conversations with the citizens, networking and building those relationships to, to make their job more personal. Their demonstration of such a level of professionalism certainly reflects who they serve underneath, which is Chief Michael Quaid and Lieutenant Yox. So I just wanted to share that with council and the culture which is doing its best to try and paint law enforcement as the enemy instead of those who are here to not only protect us, but they're willing to put their lives on the line to protect our stuff. I just wanted to let council know, you know, just the level of professionalism and the, just the fantastic officers we have serving our community and the great leadership in which they serve underneath. So I just want to share that with you. Second of all, I'd just like to make a request. I don't know if it's feasible or not. Over at Ernie Mills, I'm watching the clock, I got a minute. Over at Ernie Mills, right in the middle of that big grassy area is a, is a tree. Now, in the past, we have rented the, the park there, and also I've attended several events there, and what I've come to discover, and maybe you guys have discovered this as well, is if there is a large crowd there, that tree prevents quite the obstacle to being able to see what's going on on stage. So basically, that tree limits being able to utilize all of that grassy area. So what I'd like to ask the council, if it is feasible, cost-effective, of course, is to move that tree and transplant it off to the side to where it can still be appreciated. And by moving that tree, it'll allow us to completely utilize that whole area, which will allow more people to gather, and the view will not be obstructed from what's going on, on the stage. Thank you. Six seconds, that's pretty good.
Possibly, Troy, when you make your report, you might make a comment or two to that, you know? Okay, is there anyone else?
Julianne Mendonza, 11894 East Blue Coat Drive. I feel like I just wanted to touch up on some loose ends. I had brought a PowerPoint about signage. I heard Kathy mention it. I guess just looking for any feedback whenever it's convenient for you all on if and when we can begin to take action on picking up the signs. I was also interested, I know that community development has really taken a, a bit of a hit since one of the people left, and it's sort of left Georgina with a lot of responsibilities and training in addition to being new to the position. I think that that's probably more than I can understand, you know, having to manage. So I guess I would just be interested in any updates on what we're doing to support Georgina in her role. I don't know if there was, at one point, we talked about temps for someone to help her, or, I'm just interested in updates on how things are going because I know that she really has a lot on her plate. And then there's people like me who are asking about things like code violations and permits, and I just want to give kudos to her for addressing what I felt was a very big code concern in my community, and it was really professional and organized, and I really felt hopeful when there, when, when it was addressed, but I know that there's a lot on her plate. Curious about barriers to Main Street, and again, if that's staffing, I would just be interested to close the loop to know because I know we had talked a lot about getting back on that, and I'm just interested to know what the barriers are. Making a suggestion to put a moratorium on all building projects at this point. I know that the city council is talking about several costly building projects, but with the cost of labor and materials, seems like maybe it's not the time for that. And encourage the city council to develop a priority list, like a clear priority list, maybe based on the survey that we did, so that we have a clear map and direction on where we're going. Excited to say that I started going door-to-door in the historic district with the grant application so that maybe we can get some takers. There's some people working on their houses, so it was really convenient to stop by and talk to them about the opportunity, and they are really excited. So the volunteers are really working as hard as we can to get people connected with that grant money. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Julie. One thing I can throw out, I would ask you that would at least help facilitate some of your suggestions, is in between meetings, the council as a whole will submit questions from time to time to Ms. Odom that are basically directed to the various department heads. And oftentimes, the department heads at that time will, like tonight, when we get to that category, they will respond to sometimes those questions. So not saying this is a answer-all to all your concerns, but one or two things you could do is submit your questions to Ms. Odom, and she could submit them to the department heads and ask them to be part of the report. So that, that at least would take a bite out of some of your concerns.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? All right. Ms. Odom, please take note that everyone that wanted to speak has spoke. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak?
I do not have any hands raised.
Okay. We are now moving to Agenda Item Number Two, the Dunellen Chamber and Business Association Report. Welcome, Julie.
I'm Judy Twiliger. I'm the Director of the Dunellen Chamber of Commerce, and we have our report. We have three new members this month, Studio 118, Deca Realty, Sherry Sensi Wax and Warmers, and we have some upcoming events as well. March 16 is our Business After Hours, and that's at the Barbers &amp; Beers, starting at 5:30, and we ask that you please RSVP by March 14. March 19 through 20 is the Rainbow Springs Art Festival. March 22 is our monthly networking mixer dinner, and that's going to be at the Rainbow Springs Village Church, and it's going to be catered by baba queues. That also starts at 5:30, and we also ask that you RSVP by March 18. April 2 is our last Friday, Saturday, oh, excuse me, our last Saturday, first Saturday Market in the Park for the season, and they will resume again in November. April 9 is our Boomtown Days in the historic downtown from 9 to 5. And we also had our annual awards dinner on Thursday, March 24, at the Palm Grove Clubhouse at Oak Run, and it was very successful. We sold out. So feedback from the venue was, it was wonderful. Everyone loved the venue. They had a great time, so it was great. Our last, our Market in the Park was on March 5, and that actually went very well despite the windy, windy weather. We got a lot of positive comments from the people in the community. People really like the fact that it's in the park. A lot of people are bringing their kids or letting their kids play in the park or play on the, in the basketball court, and they're shopping. So it seems to be creating a buzz, so I think it's wonderful. And that's all for today.
Just real quick, if we want to RSVP to the Barbers &amp; Beers, how do we do that?
You can either email me, or you can directly at the chamber, or you can just click going on our Facebook page, our events page.
Okay. Julie, where is that business located?
Oh, it's in, next to Sonic in that plaza.
Oh, okay. Where Crest?
Yeah, where Crest Diagnostics is. Yep, right in there.
All right.
Right on the end.
Big oak tree.
I'm sorry?
It said the big oak tree.
Yeah, the big oak tree. Yep.
I was just there at Crest. Long ago, I just didn't notice it.
Yeah, it's on the other end, where Papa John's used to be, I think it was.
All right. Check.
Thank you very much. Item Number Three, Board Reports. Any board reports? Mr. Yarvel, you have anything to?
I mean, last one was a scanner.
Okay. Anything you want to tell us about that's oncoming, like a fast-moving locomotive that we need to know about? No? Okay, I knew I could coax you up there.
Brenda D'Arbel, 11661 Kemp Drive, Dunellen. Upcoming that we will have for our next meeting, there seemed to be some confusion about our city's mission statement, and we'd had meetings in the past trying to formulate a mission statement, add that to our comprehensive plan, and then Mr. Bracken has shared that when we do that, we will have to have a community meeting that has to participate. When I spoke with Georgina today, it's been discovered, and I have to, I think, thank Andrew for that, that back in 2004, I believe, is that correct, Georgina? Seventeen years ago, there had been such an attempt, or there was an ordinance written about it. So this was all new to me, and I know the other members because none of us have been serving that long. So this next meeting, we have to So this next meeting, we have to address that, make our comments, make our recommendations to council, and then that will come before you. And that will have to be addressed before we can move forward with, uh, the objective of, of what we're trying to accomplish.
Will that work as a city, as a, um, public meeting?
From what I understand, it would have to be. Yes, bring it to you and then.
That'll work as the public meeting.
That's my understanding, so, thank you.
I, I do have a question. Um, haven't heard much lately, in fact, I have heard nothing lately about the proposed RV Park on Forty. Is there anything ongoing?
We have had nothing come before us, I'm not sure if community development has or not.
It's.
From, from the initial presentation, I haven't heard anything.
Maybe, Georgina, when we get to you, you might comment on that. If there's no comment, you can say there's no comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else from, um, board reports, agenda item number three? Okay, we're moving on to number four, the agreement, twenty twenty-two dash zero eight, Dunellen Little League. I believe, uh, Ms. Odom's going to take the lead on going over that with us.
Yes, sir. Um, the agreement that the city had, the use agreement with, uh, Dunellen Little League expired, um, it was from two thousand seventeen. So we have a proposed renewal that would be good through September twenty, uh, twenty twenty-six, which would be consistent with the end of the city's sublease agreement with the state. Um, it's pretty much the same, um, agreement as we had before and may be renewed for successive five-year periods, same as the previous agreement. You have the agreement in your back up there as well.
So it's my understanding, it's actually three five-year timeframes that basically after the end of each five years, the, the two sides can decide whether they want to go forward with it?
May be renewed for successive five-year periods upon written agreement of both parties.
So, Andrew, it'd be my interpretation that it's non-renewable if any of the two parties decide they want, because it says it's an agreement of both parties.
If no action is taken, it, it just continues, it continues on, um, until notice is given that not under the lease anymore, uh, and it also is dependent, of course, on whether or not the city is continuing its sublease with OGT. So ultimately, uh, kind of the structure of this, the city has a sublease where it subleases those fields from the state and this is not a lease, this is just a use agreement allowing the little league, like a license to utilize those fields under certain conditions.
Correct. So if something would happen, for instance, with the state, that five years from now, they needed, they needed that property for something that they didn't think they'd need now. So the state could say, we choose not to sign for the additional ten years or five years, correct? Or vice versa, right? That's right, okay. All right, all right. Thank you, Ms. Odom, any, uh, comments, council?
Can I ask a question?
Hmm? Yes, absolutely.
How long have we had a lease with the state for that little league? Oh. I couldn't hear you almost.
Oh my God, with my voice? Good, huh, makes me feel good. Yeah, I was just wondering, how long have we had a lease for that field? It's been out there for a while, they've been playing ball.
I think since the late nineties.
Since the late nineties? Oh, okay.
Ninety-eight, yeah.
Oh, okay. And it looks really nice and it did my heart good, um, for the parade to see the little kids on the trucks, on the back of the trucks and stuff going down Pennsylvania Avenue. They were just so excited and it looks really nice out there, but that dusty road, oh my God. Now, I understand why Annette would come and complain about that road out there, I mentioned it, Detroit. The road that leads to the Little League is terrible.
That's why I used to never wash my car from February until whenever my stepson stopped winning games.
Yeah, it's awful.
Because it was just no use.
Yeah, it's awful.
Well, Councilwoman, I, I think that's an excellent point because many, many people that are involved with our Little League don't necessarily live right within the city limits. We realize many of the participants live in the surrounding area.
Mm-hmm.
So you can imagine if you're really not a city resident and you really don't come to Dunellen all that often, but when you do come to Dunellen to watch your kid play baseball, that's the road that you look at. So it kind of puts it, an impression in everybody's mind, oh, this is Dunellen, really? Uh, so you're right, it's, um, it's a very high visible place for visitors into the city and they're going, honestly, if you've never gone down that road, you almost need a four-wheel drive and if you stop in the sugar sand, it is possible to get stuck. That, that road is.
Not that bad. I used to get my Saturn back there.
Yeah, well, just, i- it's bad, so.
But the field is very nice.
Yeah.
Y'all done a good job, Troy.
Yeah.
The Little League.
Is it okay to put this on consent on Monday?
Counsel?
I would think so.
Counsel, yes. Okay, we're moving on to number five, Mockingbird Drive and West Blue Cove Drive roadway project. And, uh, this is Troy.
Good evening, council.
Good evening, sir.
My hesitation to speak a lot tonight, I've been dealing with the allergies and pollen.
Oh my God.
If you want a cough and fit, I'll walk out. Anyways, this right here is the, uh, uh, Mockingbird Blue Cove, uh, West Blue Cove Drive, project that we've been working on for the last couple of months. It has finally got a final design. We are ready to go out to bid. This time, we're asking council's permission to start the bidding on the project. Um, this is for the three intersections along Mockingbird, as well as the section of road of Mockingbird coming from Camp Drive to those three intersections. But it also includes a short segment of roadway on West Blue Cove. When you first enter the subdivision, take the very first left, it leads to the church. Mandy, if, if you can, I think you have a backup file for the final, uh, plan and design. If you'll scroll down, a couple more, right there. That right there is a picture of the three intersections along Mockingbird and the length of Mockingbird that will get paved for this project. Mandy, if you'll scroll down one more. Right there is the short segment of West Blue Cove. You see where it ties in just out midway of their parking lot on West Blue Cove? You got me good this year. Okay, so we're ready to go out and bid. The, uh, estimated costs, the engineering estimated costs for this project, uh, should come in at around a hundred and fifty-one thousand. And that does, uh, carry a contingency of about twenty percent, twenty-five thousand. So we expect the bids, as with the rest of our projects, have come in less than what we anticipate the project costs, but we do allow for that in those contingencies. We keep the numbers high to give room for the bidding.
Counsel, any comments, questions?
When do you think, or I guess, when will the bids go out and come back?
If this is approved at Monday night's council, I can get with the engineers and go out to bid immediately. Usually takes about forty-five days for the bidding process, thirty to forty-five days, I believe, is the standard to get the bids back on this project. I think that's achievable. And then once they come back, it has to come to council for approval to award the bids, same as we have with the Ohio and Cedar Street project.
So this probably won't go out, did this even start in this fiscal year or this fiscal year?
It should, we're only halfway through our fiscal year, yes. So if we're, we could probably get started on the project in about four months, so just before the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
Max, I would say that'd be a maximum number, really.
One thing I'd like to bring out, Troy, is in our conversations, one thing you said to me that was intriguing, that we are about ready to start after Boomtown Days on Cedar and Ohio Street.
Correct.
And it'd be really nice if we can coordinate this project, that when this, the Ohio Street and Cedar Street project is finishing up, while we have everybody working, they just move right on over there and continue on.
Timing of the bidding.
That would be really, so.
We go out to bid this, this coming week, we start the bidding process, within a couple of weeks, they're starting construction on Ohio and Cedar, which is estimated to be done sometime around June, July, at the latest, right? So that's plenty of time for the bids to come in, award bids. Now, if it's the same contractor, they do have that convenience of moving from one project straight over to the next. It may not always be that same contractor, it just depends on who comes in lowest on the bids.
Well, it'd seem if I was the contractor that had the, the job on Ohio and Cedar Street, if I knew that my equipment was already here and all I had to do is move over there, when I bidded that new job, I'd be able to make a, a pretty good bid, knowing that I don't have to tear everything down and take it back, bring it back.
I would certainly hope that that would be a considerable factor when.
I'd be very motivated if I were them to, uh, to win that bid.
So anyhow, uh, we are asking council's permission to move forward and go out to bid.
Consent, agenda?
It might be a short speech meeting.
Okay, uh, Ms. Odom, we have a unanimous consent, consent agenda.
Thank you, council.
All right, thank you, Troy. Go to, uh, item number six, which is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero four, business tax receipt. And, uh, I believe, Ms. Odom, this is, this is for you.
Yes, um, according to the statute, we're able to up our business tax receipt by five percent every two years. And looking at, um, at this, we have not done that since two thousand seventeen. So we've actually missed out on a, an opportunity in two thousand nineteen. So we wanted to get this on the books as quickly as possible because this starts the clock for the next two years. Once this is adopted, we'll be able to increase it by five percent once again, um, in twenty twenty-four. Uh, the current fee is fifty-seven dollars and forty-two cents, which would increase to sixty dollars and twenty-nine cents. And that would be for any new businesses coming in between now and the end of the fiscal year, because for the current fiscal year, the, uh, the business tax have already been, um, billed out. So, um, and that sixty dollars and twenty-nine cent would go into effect for all businesses , uh, effect of ten one. Uh, the other, um, part of this that we were looking at due to the rise in, uh, the number of short-term rentals, vacation rentals, in our, um, current ordinance, it said, uh, in order to qualify as a business that, uh, was required to have a business tax receipt, you had to have two or more rental properties. So those, uh, that only have one in the city would not have been, or even two, they wouldn't have had, had to obtain a business tax receipt. You had to have more than two. So we changed the language, um, proposing, if council agrees, that that be amended to if a person owns one vacation rental inside the city limits, then they have to buy a or pay for a business tax receipt.
I think that's a good idea because that way we'll know which homes. And, and it's not because, but if, you know, the neighbor goes, oh my God, there's always somebody coming and going, we can say, oh, they have, they are an Airbnb or VRBO or whomever they are. And that will help the police as well know that those residents are seasonal rentals or that they can, you know, if they see somebody taking a TV out, that's probably not a normal move out.
Yes, and they, um, the short-term rentals are supposed to, um, be registering if they're in Marion County, they're supposed to be registering with the county.
But there's a tax that they pay.
Right.
Heads and bits tax.
So if we can obtain that list from the county, that's where we would start identifying those that are inside our city limits and may be required to obtain a business tax receipt.
That's what I was gonna, did we get any of that tax money back if it's in the city limits?
I got a question.
You talking about the tourist tax?
Mm-hmm. I didn't think so. That's what we're working for.
Okay, I recognize Ms. Williams.
Oh, I just have a question, those Airbnbs, are they not allowed to maybe identify the property as an Airbnb?
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Have signs out, like I saw this one on, um, Pennsylvania that has a little sign that's identified itself as an Airbnb vacation home. They're not, they're not allowed to have signs out to identify what they are?
I'm not sure, um, if there's anything that regulates that.
Okay.
That was the gentleman, that was the house of the gentleman who came that we also interviewed for the position that Georgina asked.
I was just wondering because it seemed like to me they're coming up more and more. It would be nice to identify which ones are. There's one on my street, I didn't even know it. Just found out through the neighbor.
Well, I think this goes somewhat with what Ms. Dunn said earlier, the unregulated use of signs.
But it's a for rent sign, like you would do a residential, if I had a residence that I am putting for rent or for sale, it's, so I don't know if there's a difference.
If it's all private property, um, and not in our right of way and it's not in violation of our sign code, I don't know how you could prevent them from doing that.
Well, I would think there would have to be a way, if you, uh, drove through the villages, for instance, I don't think you would be seeing those kind of signs within the villages.
Well, but they also don't do a lot of for sale signs and, or rent signs. I think.
Yes, go ahead.
Well, I think this is, this is a new, uh, area of, uh, development that we're not accustomed to and I think we need to do a lot of research to see exactly how we can benefit and also how our residential properties are going to be not affected in terms of looking commercial when you come into a neighborhood. But this is, this is a whole new area, uh, that we haven't really, um, become educated in. And I would think that maybe the Planning Commission could take a really close look at it and bring it forward in terms, and then, of course, we would get the legal help and we've got Georgina here. So we really need to look into it because it's becoming a, a big, uh, issue in this area.
And I'm not talking about big, huge signs, you know, just something small to identify the property as an Airbnb or something, that's what I was referring to.
So, Ms. Odom, to your report, it seems like we have two issues that we're discussing simultaneously. One is usage of signs to advertise that a private home can be rented. Um, and then secondly is identifying those homes that are being used, those residential places that are being used that way and make sure that they have a business tax receipt to do that.
The signage is not addressed in the ordinance. The two things that are addressed in the ordinance is the increase in business tax and the, um, revision of, rather than it saying two or more properties, it says one property.
Right, I understand that, but I mean, council is kind of intermixing the two in their discussion.
Right, as far as the signage, that's definitely something we would have to look into. I don't have a, a definite answer as to how that can be regulated.
So what is, what is staff's recommendation?
Let Georgina review it.
Okay.
Staff's recommendation as far as the ordinance?
Yes.
Oh, we would move it forward to first reading on Monday.
If we're talking about signs, then have Georgina start looking at our sign ordinances.
We definitely want the tax from these people who are taking advantage of, of, uh, their, their opportunity maybe, depending on how you look at it, but it is a, I know, a new, uh, area of expertise and I, I think it really needs to be dug into with a couple of public meetings. We have a lot of people who are interested in this area.
Well, Ms. Odom, the, uh, first reading is basically the first reading, it's the, the discussion of nothing happens from a first reading, correct?
Well, you, you, if you pass it on first reading, then we advertise for a public hearing at your council meeting in April.
Well, I, I think that would, that would.
We're directing, we're also directing staff, I would like to do some, uh, uh, investigation and, and come forward with what other communities are doing and how they're handling this issue.
That's a separate and apart from the ordinance. We would, the ordinance.
You're, you're interested in the tax.
Yes.
We, we.
And we, and we're, we're good with doing whatever we need to do for the tax, but it just brings up a whole new issue.
Right, right. So we can, I mean, it, you don't need to hold this ordinance up because of the question about the signage. Move forward with the. Move forward with the ordinance and then we can look into the signage separately.
I agree. And the only reason I brought up the signage is it was being discussed in the same sentence.
Yeah.
You know, I'm just trying to make sure we know.
We muddied the waters.
Yeah. So I think we, Ms. Odom has clearly shown that two years ago, we had the opportunity to raise this fee by 5% for whatever reason it wasn't addressed. We missed that opportunity. So now we do have an opportunity this year. Seems like that business tax receipt is very reasonable fee. Doesn't sound like it's $57. Did you say what?
$57.42, and it'll go up to $60.29.
So this would be across the board for all businesses, which would include short-term rentals, even if it's one.
One unit, one property.
The thing about that, we would have a clear identification of who is doing it, which I don't think we really know that right now.
We do not currently collect the business tax for any short-term rental.
Nor do we know for sure who's doing it and where they're at, at least. And then it would give us an opportunity to stop it if they hadn't gotten their paperwork together, too.
I have a question.
Yes.
Mandy, is it possible to go to Marion County Tax Office and find out who these people are? Because we have the, they would have the addresses and find out if they're within city limits.
If they registered.
Treats them that way?
If they registered with the county like they're supposed to.
Like they're required by law.
Right. And Jan had a good suggestion, too, that you could also look at the property appraisers' site to see what properties are not homestead. And if they're not homestead, then that might warrant further investigation as to whether or not they're being used as a rental.
Up on Airbnb.
I mean, it could be a person's vacation home, you know, but it could also be a.
Limits our field for searches then.
Yeah.
Bye, Mayor.
And Andrew, just real quick, Mr. Hand, a seasonal rental is considered less than six months? Well, I know, but I want to make sure that we're not muddying more waters. Are we, are we just looking at six months and less or is it just purely Airbnb, which I just want to make sure we've got the percentage, you know, collecting from one?
Vacation rentals, so yes, be short-term rentals.
Sure, less than six months. Because I mean, I know some people just, they're not always Airbnbs, but they're, like I used to do a lot of just three-month rentals for seasonal people coming, snowbirds. I just want to make sure that.
I couldn't find it passed enough. Sorry, Mandy. And I just want, if it's not in there, I think maybe that's what we should put in.
Rental, I'm sorry, I misspoke a while ago. It was the rental of two or more. So if they had two or more, they had to pay the business tax. Now it's.
Okay, they're a short.
They just have one.
Okay, all right. So I just, I couldn't find it passed enough.
Yeah, check that out with the Marion County Tax Office. And any short-term rental means six months or less. And also, there's another question. People that are collecting the rental money, some of them are out of state. They so, it's hard to track some, the action of what's going on as far as short-term rentals. So we have to work with the Marion County Tax Office.
It won't be 100%, that's for sure.
Find out what's going on.
But I think the impetus of what your staff is recommending is trying to get the revenue raised from 57 to 60, right?
Which is really.
That's really what this is about, mostly. So you recommend, you're hoping to put it on the agenda for the meeting as first reading?
Yes.
Counsel?
I'm good.
All right, let's go with it. Any other comments on this item? Very good. We're going to number seven now. Request for proposal RFP 2022-01 Wood Pavilion Shade Shelters at City Beach. Troy, this is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Council, as directed the last couple of months, we have gone out for RFPs to have additional shade pavilions built at the city beach. During that process, we only received one proposal, one official RFP. The total amount was double what we had budgeted for the project. Total amount was $60,000 for two additional.
For one shade?
For two shade pavilions.
For two.
Right. So, and also, the proposal was considered to be non-responsive as it, as there was requested items that were not submitted as outlined in the RFP process. Our recommendation is to reject the proposal due to the cost of the project being too With that, counsel, also remember, we are reviewing our purchasing policy. It will give us an opportunity to receive bids or quotes through a different manner to ensure if we're going to move forward with the project, that we can keep it within our budget.
Seems reasonable.
I mean, I think at this time of year, we don't need to.
Well, right now, Troy, you are out looking at alternatives, prefab buildings and whatever.
All different types of alternatives. So the minute the council changes the purchasing policy and releases me to go out and get my bids and quotes, I can come back with multiple options that will fit within our budget and within what the council decides they want constructed.
So right now, how much money do you have at hand? $30,000?
I have $30,000 in the budget.
And we're trying to get two more shade shelters finished, right? And we are well aware that some of the prefab ones can be built within that budget.
Considerably cheaper. Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
If anybody wants to see one, just go down Pennsylvania, where they sell the sheds there. They just put up a massive one, like 24 by 30 there as a demo. And did you verify the price? They told me that.
I did not verify the price.
$11,000 or $12,000 for that massive.
I did talk to them about coming out and working up price quotes for us, but I won't talk about the pricing or open those quotes until council has changed the purchasing policy. Because of what it stands now.
But I don't want to jump from this item with council thinking this is a dead issue.
No, it is definitely.
This issue is alive and well because I think with $30,000, there are alternatives to get this done.
Absolutely. The, had two other contractors that I have spoke with. One called us after the RFP had closed. He did not qualify to put in for the RFP, but since has received his general contractors and qualifications to do the project. So he's on the list to give a call. And anybody else who had received the plan sets, why the RFP was out but did not submit, I'll reach out to them and find out why they didn't submit or if they're willing to submit their options as well. And that will give us an opportunity to look at different styles, designs, materials, whatever works feasible and whatever the council decides.
So a month from now, when you report back to council, what are you hoping that you will report to us?
If you have that purchasing policy changed where I can go out and get these quotes, I will come back with quotes.
You would like us to change the purchasing policy?
That's what we're.
It's on your agenda to be done, and I'm just waiting for it to be done.
It's actually on your agenda for Monday for the public hearing and the final reading of the ordinance. So as soon as that passes on Monday, it changes that threshold to $35,000. So if it's under $35,000, all Troy has to do is obtain two quotes to bring to council for your approval.
So point made why we need to do it, right?
If you do your job, I'll do mine, I promise.
So in other words, your hands are kind of tied right now until we do our work.
Yes, sir.
Okay, understood.
Very good. So consent agenda to reject the bid that we received for $60,000 is my recommendation.
Okay.
Everybody good with that?
Good.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we're at item number eight, Resolution 2022-03 Amending the March 2008 Blue Run Park Management Plan. I would guess, Andrew, this would be your topic, correct?
Sure, I'd be happy to speak to this, Mayor. This particular resolution was discussed with council some time ago, and the language shows up in the current ordinance that has been adopted. This would actually enforce the ordinance, has not taken effect yet. This resolution would take effect prior to the ordinance. Since it's part of the management plan, the reason it's coming before you now is just for the simple fact that when amending the management plan, there are certain notice requirements. Information has to go out to the state, and they have to be able to review it along with the city's partners. That process is now taking place, and so it's coming back before you.
So what is the next step?
Next step would be to approve the resolution.
And that's simply done, that could be done possibly Monday?
Yes.
Okay. Comment, counsel?
That'll go on your regular council meeting agenda because it has to be read by title.
Okay, so put it on the agenda, Ms. Odom, correct? Ms. Odom will just be on the regular agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now we're moving on to number nine, Ordinance 2022-02 Blue Run Park Commercial Use Exceptions. Okay, again, I believe Mr. Hand will fill us in on this one.
Yes, Mayor, again, the original Blue Run Park ordinance has not yet become effective. This just adds on some of the common sense. I think a few meetings ago, I had mentioned that I've been discussing with staff some common sense exceptions, and that it would be creating those forth. This has also gone to FCT for their review, and they have approved it. And this is just to ensure that the city is able to follow its ordinance and provide exceptions for things such as, and I'll go through a few of them, emergency services such as ambulances, tow trucks, and roadside assistance, performance of park-related services and activities for the city or for another governmental agency that has obligations to undertake certain activities per the plan. So if the city needed to hire, say, some sort of a service, whether it's burning, prescribed burning, something along those lines, that's something to be allowed specifically under this provision, engagement and expressive activities provided by the First Amendment, disability accommodations that are authorized by the city, utility services provided on-site for the maintenance of any utility improvements, and activities or services that the city must allow under state or federal law.
Very good. Any comment, counsel?
I'm just glad to see the roadside assistance. I locked my keys in the trunk in the park one day.
So we need to hide a key in one of the trees out there for you?
I just opened my trunk to put some stuff in and put my keys down. My keys in the trunk.
So basically, what this is, we're just tightening up the ordinance with that subsection D with the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 items that are there.
That's good.
So.
That makes sense.
Where do we need to go with this now, if council's okay with it?
So this will be up for first reading on Monday. This could be first reading on Monday, and from there, second reading, I believe there is a special meeting that staff is looking at later in this month. This could go on second reading at that meeting, be adopted prior to, or it will be adopted coterminous with the ordinance that's already been adopted. So everything will become effect all at once, effective all at once, pardon me.
So the goal would be to connect it with the April 1 date, so the whole thing together?
Exactly.
Okay.
So, counsel, what we would need to do in order to adopt this prior to April 1st is schedule a special council meeting, and we would propose the 21st because you already have a CRA board special meeting scheduled for the 21st to consider offers on the church property. So you could follow that special CRA board meeting with a special city council meeting to have the second final reading in the public hearing so you could adopt this prior to April 1st.
Okay, well, definitely.
Or after.
Definitely, we will have the special meeting. Counsel, are you okay putting this on the agenda for Monday?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Odom, put it on the agenda, and we will go forward with that special meeting. Any other comments on number nine before we move on? Very good. Now we're at number 10, Discussion of the Florida Minimum Wage Increase. As you all know, Florida is, over a staggered period of time, going to raise the minimum wage to $15 an hour. And staff is looking at that and seeing how it impacts us. So I'm, Ms. Odom, I believe this is yours, correct?
Yes, sir. So just a little background on this. I'm sure everyone probably remembers this was on the 2020 ballot, and it passed the constitutional amendment that went into effect, increasing Florida's minimum wage over a period of several years. The first increase was from $8.65 an hour to $10 an hour. That was, that was effective, I think it was January 1 of 2021. Then in September, September 30 of 2021, that increased, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the $10 was September 30. There was a slight increase in January, then it went.
Michelle, could you blow those numbers up? I think everybody would like to see that.
So it went to 8.65 in January, and then in September, it went to $10 an hour. So currently, the minimum wage is $10 an hour, which was a $1.35 increase over what was in effect September 30 of last year. Come September 30 of this year, it's going to raise again to $11. And so we have got to be prepared to deal with this before we reach the maximum of $15 and $15 and we get hit with all of it at once. So what we've done is looked at a couple of different ways how we might handle this and address it incrementally so as not to place as much of a burden on the city's finances. But we do have to get out in front of it. There are some cities who are obviously much larger and wealthier than Danellan that have already gone to the $15. They've just jumped right ahead and said, hey, we might as well go ahead and do it now and get it out of the way instead of having to deal with it year after year and make adjustments. We just simply can't afford to do that. So what I've done is we have looked at the last compensation study that was done a couple of years ago, and one of the methods that I looked at to address this would be to adjust those salary ranges by $1.35. So increasing the minimum range for each position by $1.35. And then looking at years of service, which we also did consistent with the last study, I forget what multiplier we used, but I used a 1% multiplier in the calculation to account for years of service so that you don't end up with compression issues where you have people in similar, in the same salary range that one person may have been here 10 years and another person's been here a year, so they don't wind up being at the same rate of pay. So what we've calculated is about a $17,000 impact, $17,600 to the current fiscal year. And I can actually show you the various implementation options that I ran, and this is by far the So if you can, I'll see if I can blow this up a little bit. Okay, so the first option would be adjust all the salary ranges by $1.35, and that is based on the 9/30/2022. And that is based on the 9/30/21 increase from 8.65 to $10. That would start to incrementally increase those ranges to eventually catch up with the new minimum wage. This fiscal year cost to implement that, which includes benefits, I had to run the numbers again, and it increased it from 17.6 to 17.7. The annual cost for this going into the next fiscal year would be $34,000. The pro to this is it accounts for the 9/30/21 increase. It is the most affordable option if we were to, of the four that I've ran, to do it incrementally. This method is fair and equitable and it avoids compression issues. And what I mean by that is that everyone is looked at equally through this method. So every salary range is adjusted and then the new minimum is identified. And then you run a 1% calculation on that for years of service and that's added to base. And that is your new hourly rate for that staff member. There are people that does not affect. For people who are already in the range, myself included, I would not experience a benefit. I would not experience an increase. This method pretty much eliminates increases for any of the salary department heads. And it only affects hourly employees and it doesn't affect all the hourly employees equally because of the years of service calculation that was built into it. So this does affect 19 employees, but no department heads. The second analysis that I ran would be to take into account both the 9/30/21 increase and the upcoming 22 increase, which is going to $11 an hour. That was by adjusting the ranges by $2.35 instead of $1.35. This did not turn out to be affordable for the city, although it does account for both of the increases. As you can see, the fiscal impact is 42, almost $43,000. And the full annual impact to the fiscal year 2023 budget would be almost $83,000. So this is not something that I would ever ask the counsel to consider, but I wanted to run several different options. So you can see, looking at this, that at some point we're going to have to address it, but I just don't think we can now. The third option I looked at was just adding a flat $1.35 to everybody. The problem with that is it still only addresses the 9/30/21 increase and it, but it also affects employees that were not affected using the methodology by increasing the ranges. So for example, in option one, an employee might have gotten an 18 cent increase to their hourly rate based on the methodology that was used. Option three, it makes it sound so much simpler, just give everybody $1.35, but that person who we ran through that analysis based on their years of service that would only get an 18 cent increase would get a $1.35 increase. So that's why the cost is so much more for option three. And then the last option was to give everyone $1.35 with the exception of department heads. And that did not reduce that enough to, I think, take that option into consideration. And again, it applies increases where they're not necessary according to the analysis ran for options one and two, and it still doesn't account for the 9/30/22 increase. So unless counsel has another idea, another way you want me to approach this or look at this, I'd be happy to run whatever numbers you would like me to. But if I had to recommend what we've looked at thus far, it would have to be option one.
Can I say it in Valerie terms now?
Sure.
So option one, if I'm understanding you right, we're going to basically just be doing 2021, bringing it from 8.65 to $10, right? Okay. But, and I'm just gonna go with Julie because you're not salaried. Sorry, girl. But, so let's say Julie had been here for five years. She's not gonna get, and let's say she's at $9 right now, an hour. Would she get the $1.35 or would she just get that 18 cents? So would she now make $9.18?
It would depend on the person and the years of service.
Right, but I'm just saying, let's just.
Okay. I'll see if I can dumb it down. Okay, let's say you have a person who's been here 10 years.
Right.
And a person who's been here two years.
Yeah.
Those two employees have the same pay scale. They have the same salary range, say $25,000 to $35,000, right?
That part I get.
So you take $25,000 and you break it down to an hourly rate.
Right.
You add a $1.35 to that, okay, which creates a new hourly rate and a new beginning range for that position.
Okay.
Okay? Then you take that beginning range, the new beginning range, and you multiply it by 1%. And that comes to $250, okay? That 1%. Then you multiply that by the years of service.
So now 2,500.
And you add that to the new base.
Thank you.
That is that employee's new salary.
Now I understand.
So if you have two people, one with 10 years in that position and one with two years in a similar position but within that range, the person with 10 years is going to get more of an adjustment than the person who's only been there for two years.
Okay, now I understand. Thank you for that example.
That makes sense.
Valerie Dunn did good.
Other questions, comments?
I have one comment and that is being that you're gonna go with your first option, which obviously is what you most likely have to do because our budget is already set for this term period. But in the future, I would like to tell the employees out there that hopefully we can pay them more than that one. As we go into another fiscal year, we can have arrangements to possibly bump up their pay. Because we all know what's happening with inflation, the price of gas and so on. So this plan could possibly just be the current situation in next fiscal year. Possibly there's wiggle room that we could think about now to bump up people's pay.
This really falls outside of your current budget. So we have to figure out, okay, how are we gonna pay for this? Which we can, I just want to rest assure counsel, we can cover this. If counsel wanted to move to another option, the budget would allow it. Not the budget as set, but we would probably do a budget amendment. So it does allow you the flexibility.
Okay.
To do whatever you see fit.
For the next fiscal year, right?
Yes, or even this fiscal year. If you wanted to move to the $15 right away, now Mandy hasn't calculated that. I'm not sure how much that would be. But again, that would be outside your established budget this year. If you wanted to do that, it would just require a budget amendment. So I just want to let you know you have the flexibility.
That's what I was hoping. Thank you.
And to point to Jan's point, option two would take us through the upcoming additional dollar increase that's going to happen in September. But we haven't addressed, we have addressed that in option two, but I mean, you see the numbers. It would require a budget amendment this year for almost $43,000. And it would increase next year's budget by $82,000. And not knowing what our revenues are gonna come in at yet, it's impossible for us to recommend that you approve something with that sort of impact on the budget when we don't even know where we're gonna pay for it, how we're gonna pay for it.
Thanks, Mayor.
And that's a good point. I mean, I'm with Ms. Coach. I would love to just say yes, let's just hop at $15 an hour for everyone. And I mean, I would love that. However, as a fiscal responsible person up here, I have to also thank, just like I am at home right now, about the gas increase that our budget's gonna be taking. When Troy does have to fix something, build something, there's an increase that's going there. So we have some different options that we can do. We can stop, and this is something that we're gonna have to think of during our budget season, which I lovingly saw the calendar. Thanks, Jan. But we need to, you know, kind of put this in the back of our minds because we might not need to be doing $30,000 worth of sheds at the park. I mean, we might need to start thinking, we might not be able to do all the projects that we want to do for the city in order to pay the salaries that are mandated for us to do. And with the expenses of the gas and the unknowing of our revenues coming in. So that is something that we as a council is going to have to do. And we can do it, but again, if we want to keep all of the budgets and the projects and such, we all know the evil word that would have to come out of our mouths and that would be raising the military. And that's something that none of us want to do, but I mean, it's just, it's a reality. So that's just something that we're all gonna have to really think hard of, especially this coming budget season.
Ms. Kenny?
This is John, my area of expertise, I'll tell you that. But I see the reasoning that we have in terms of the choices and I agree with our, with our city clerk, yes. So I would be for one.
Okay, Ms. Williams?
All I can say is Mandy has the expertise. I can't talk.
All right, so Mandy, the way this is, just to kind of really make it narrow and understood, this is focused not on the minimum wage increase, which is mandated by the state. What this is, how we respond to it with our employees that are currently making more money, that the people that get these bumps, that are getting $8, $9, $10 an hour, and you're someone who's making $13, $14 an hour, you don't get a bump because you're already above that. So the worry is, new people being hired are now closing the gap in their wage to those that have served their time and have been good soldiers, right?
Yes. And you can see that, let me zoom this back out just a little bit, that option one affects 19 employees, no department heads. Option two would affect 22 employees and one department head. Option three would affect all employees, 27 employees. And option four would only affect 22 because we eliminated the department heads out of that because they were eliminated by the analysis that was done for option one. So we wanted to show, you know, we did it. I think that doing it the way we did using the methodology in option one is more clear because it shows that the department heads are currently where they should be in their ranges based on their years of service. So you can see where if it was affecting 27 employees in option three, it's only affecting 19 in option one.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am?
Yes.
In terms of the voters having approved a minimum wage, an hourly minimum wage increase, how does that comport with a person who is salaried, so they're under contract? Because when I voted for the minimum wage increase, which I did, I did not think that I was voting for something that would impact a salaried person.
Well, it would depend on if you're gonna treat all the employees equally. You could have a salaried person that's maybe not more highly compensated that would be affected based on their years of service. So yes, if you have a salaried employee that has a lot of years of service and they're, and I'm not saying the one department head in here that was affected by option two, it wasn't by much, it was about 18 cents an hour. It wasn't a lot. But.
Well, there are different benefits when you have a salaried, as opposed, I would think, to an hourly person. For example, if we have people coming in, working for Troy and they're doing labor work, then definitely that would be an individual who would be depended upon the hourly, the minimum hourly wage. On the other hand, another individual who maybe has been here for 15 years and is receiving bonuses and has the opportunity to have a pension, those would be things that would help to mitigate the fact that maybe some of their, they didn't always get $15 an hour.
I think I see what you're saying, but in this case, the way it worked out, the analysis showed that the department heads were not going to be affected by this. So none of the department heads, if we implement option one, not one salaried person would be affected by this, by an increase. There would be no increase to any salaries for department heads.
But I understand that. I was just thinking more in terms of the future and in terms of how you make a comparison between somebody who is actually salaried and someone who would be a day laborer.
Well, yes, and I see what you're saying. I think it would be hard to get to that point where that person would actually be affected. But you also have to take into account that the higher the minimum wage is, the more you're gonna have to pay your lower paid employees. And I'm not saying they're anywhere near catching up to your department heads, but you've got those people in the middle, your higher end administrative staff that's hourly. And you, to avoid compression, there may come a time that you have to raise your salary employees so that your higher level administrative people aren't making what your department heads are making.
Or they could conceivably be promoted into a salaried position.
That's true too.
Just let you know to, I know the county just gave a dollar raise. I want to tell you it was across board and I don't know if it was just my husband's building department, but I know they just, and it's to try and level. So this isn't just something that the city's trying to work on.
I know, and I've reached out to multiple others. We reached, Jan reached out through her finance officers group and Michelle reached out through our Ford Association of City Parks group and we got some results back from other cities. And. I mean, there was one city, and again, these are larger cities, that went to $15 just right off the bat, that had to adjust all of their employees' ranges to account for the increase to get away from compression issues. And one city, it was over $400,000 it cost them. And one city, it was over $900,000 it cost them.
And we don't have that.
Yeah.
It's not in my piggy bank.
I see the example, I think I see the example you're giving. For instance, let's say everyone was getting the minimum of $10 an hour. And then through a state law of a minimum wage, it was increased to $15 an hour. Well, that would mean those that are making 15, 16, or 17 of the hour, they would have to be bumped up five bucks too, right? To keep.
And if you had two people in a salary range that had a significant difference in their years of service, say they're both making, one's making $12 an hour and one's making $14 an hour, and the new minimum wage becomes 15. and the new minimum wage becomes 15, you can't put them both at 15. The one who's got 10 years of service has got, you've got to take into account those years of service so that they're not, you don't have a tenured employee making the same hourly rate as a brand-new employee.
So the staggered Yeah, the staggered approach is obviously the way you just kind of work your way into this. Just a couple more questions I have. Is, what is the least that an hourly wage person is getting? You don't have to give us a name. And what is the most an hourly person is getting? Someone asked that question, I believe, recently.
Is $11 an hour. We currently have an $11 an hour employee. And current hourly rate. So...
So the least is 11?
Is going to be his salary. A little over $20 an hour. Salary.
And that's with benefits? Correct, Mandy?
No.
Okay.
With or without benefits?
20-plus benefits?
$20.79 is the highest-paid hourly employee.
So the question then becomes, with the first minimum wage by state law, what is that number? What's the minimum wage that we're either at or we're going to go to next year?
This year, we're going to go to $11. And if you, I'll jump back over to the agenda summary. Here's the breakdown. So this year, it's going to be 11. Next year, it's 12. Until 2026, it becomes 15.
All right, so the question then becomes, everyone that's employed by the city is currently going to be at the new minimum wage?
At least.
So the new minimum wage is to try to push people who aren't getting minimum wage to a higher level. But right now, every one of our employees is, at least this year, at that level.
Yes, sir.
So we are in compliance.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So it would just be almost a council or administrative decision to give these raises because we are in compliance with new state law.
We are in compliance, yes. But as this progresses each year?
We would not be in compliance next year, but we're in compliance this year because right now, everybody's getting $11.
We wouldn't have a choice. If we did not implement some sort of adjustment this year to address last year's adjustment, we would be in compliance, but then next year, we wouldn't have a choice but to raise that $11 an hour employee to $12 an hour. It would not be negotiable. It would be mandatory. And then the next year to 13. So you know, I'm just trying to get in front of this before two or three years down the road, and somebody looks at me and says, "Well, why didn't you tell us about this three years ago so we could have been planning for it and making these adjustments incrementally instead of having to do it all at one time?"
All right. Well, I mean, the thing, number one, I don't think anybody's getting overpaid when they're making $15 an hour, okay?
Yeah.
So I want to make that clear. I'm just trying to say, we're trying to adjust and get in compliance with a mandated state law. And if we're already in compliance, even if it's for one year, and I just want to make it clear that we don't have to adjust right now. We can wait until until we're not in compliance.
Until we're not in compliance. And then it's just going to be, it's going to hit, you're going to have to deal with a larger adjustment throughout the city than trying to address it incrementally.
So Jan, let me just ask this question. If someone's getting $15 an hour, okay, and they're working 40 hours a week, my arithmetic tick says that's $600 a week.
Can I use my phone calculator?
Come on, you got that.
I'm not doing math in my head.
So so we're trying to think of people that are living and trying to make ends meet. And we have many employees that are making less than 15 an hour. We have some work $11, $12 an hour. But at $15 an hour, making $600 a week, once you get done with your taxes and your social security and everything, usually find that's about 20, 25%.
There is not much left.
Right? So now someone's trying to make their, pay their bills with, let's deduct 120 bucks from the 600 for $480 a week. And that's at 15 dollars.
And take into consideration the cost of living that's hitting right now.
So then if someone's getting $11 or $12 an hour, you know. So to me, it's almost like, you know, maybe we don't have to do this right now. We don't have to do it right now, maybe for a year. But we know someone who's working, for instance, Troy's men, out there working in the sun, doing the things they, I know what that kind of work is like. I do a lot of it myself. And then getting $11 an hour. You know? It's not a lot of money.
One thing just to keep in the back of your mind is employee retention. You're paying for the experience that the city has right now. If an employee who is focused on, what are they taking home? What cash is in my hands every week? Not really looking at retirement or benefits, but here's the cash to pay my bills. And they know someplace else is paying more. They might go for that. And then it then costs the city more money to hire a new person and train them. So it's just something to take into consideration. If we can incrementally increase, it's not as painful because we're going to have to get there. So it's just something, just some food for thought, but you are correct. I mean, Mandy said, we're in compliance. Now, it'll just be more painful next year when we have to increase it even more. And you don't want to hurt your seasoned employees by bringing somebody up to $15. If somebody is making $20 an hour, and you now bring somebody up to 15, then that erodes their skilled value in their mind. And in reality, it does because the compensation is based on your skill level.
Understood. Okay. All right, Jan. Counsel, I think Ms. Odom has presented a very well-thought-out, very compelling analysis of what we're dealing with and what we're going to deal with. So now, I want to know a little input, what we instruct staff to do.
Have to go on the agenda on Monday night?
Well, what we would probably need to do is amend the salary classification plan by resolution, because that is adopted by resolution. I could have a resolution for you. And we would need, in addition to that, I believe, a motion to authorize the adjustments as presented. And what I've calculated, this calculation that I've given you is based on 27 weeks. So these adjustments would not take place until March 21st, which would be the beginning of the next pay period. So March 21st through September 30th of this fiscal year is 27 weeks. So...
Well, you would, counsel would really need to have this broken down into a report form between now and Monday, so we're prepared, you know? I know you've already done it, but you know, if we're
Are you talking about the complete?
If we're going to be asked for a vote, possibly on this Monday, you know, counsel really has to be immersed with everything they need to know to make this decision.
And if you're asking me for the analysis, I'd be glad to
Looks like we're focusing on number one.
Yeah.
So you can focus on number one.
Yeah, I can send that to you guys.
Because if we just leave here now and go about our lives, and then come back Monday and say, oh, by the way, what'd you guys think about, and why haven't we?
It's pretty, when you look at it, it's kind of scary. Hold on, let me hide the names, and I'm going to show you. So if you get it, and if I send it to you, and you want me to sit down with you and go over it, but I mean, this is what we're looking at. There's a lot of numbers here and a lot of formulas. And you might not know where some of these numbers come from, so I could explain that to you. But as you can see over here in this column where it says increase, you've got someone, based on this Option 1 analysis, that would get a $1.34 increase, but then you've got someone that's only going to get 15 cents or 18 cents, zero cents, 0.99 cents. So I'm happy to sit down and try to explain this, how this was developed, if someone wants to come in and meet with me. But I can shoot that out to you all, so you've got, you know, several days. I can email you also the spreadsheet with the different implementation options. And I'll get a resolution together to amend the salary plan for Monday.
Anything in addition?
Andrew, did I cover everything?
Okay, put it on the agenda?
So we'll have a resolution. It'll be on the regular agenda to be read by title. And I would probably follow that on the regular agenda with a proposed motion to authorize the adjustments based on Option 1 presentation.
So it's going to affect on March 21st?
It's going to affect on March 21st, yes.
Now, would this correlate with the time that the state is kicking in? Does the state have a similar date when the minimum wage needs to be raised?
It was raised last year, September 30th of last year. And that's the $1.35 that I'm accounting for, not accounting for what's coming in September of this year.
Okay.
That's going to just have to be addressed at a later date when we can afford it.
Well, we can put that into the budget for 2022. Or 2023.
2023.
It would be fiscal year 2023.
We'll have to catch up for '22.
And it would be a good idea if we kind of maybe plan on that and see what it does. But like Mandy said, until we start getting our revenues in, we don't want to make any assumptions that we can leave it in the budget and it not have an impact on other things, other items, such as projects, such as training, just other things in general. But you know, it's worth a shot to maybe put it in. It may not be brought forward to you. If it's way out of line, or we may bring it forward and say, okay, here's where we're at, and here's the military that it'll take to fund whatever the department heads submit. So we just need to get started, and hopefully, things work out good like this year.
So the bottom line is, for the remainder of the fiscal year, we're committing $17,000 additional to our hourly-wage employees, spread over and how many people? 15?
19.
19 people spread, $17,000 spread over 19 people. If you put it like that, that's not a whole lot of money, right?
And counsel, we may have to come back at year end with a budget amendment to fund this, but we may be able to carry it in this year's budget, so we're not going to make any changes at this point in time, other than implementing
Okay.
Missing.
All right. I'm going to put it on, counsel, if you're good with it, it will be on the agenda. Very good presentation, Ms. Odom. I know this is, you put a lot of work into this. The bags under your eyes show how much. She's going to be looking at herself in the mirror tonight.
Do we have bags under my eyes?
No.
I feel like I have them under my eyes.
All right, number 11. I'm looking forward to this report. I know staff has put a whole lot of time into this. This is the discussion of the boat watch fees that we have considered. Mandy, I would imagine, or Troy, I don't know which one of you is on the lead on this?
I have a few things I would like to show you. Jan and I and Lieutenant Yaw took a field trip over to Citrus County. Jan found, through reaching out to different cities and counties to learn what they do to handle watch fees. Citrus County recently just implemented a system over there in January that is working very well for them. And so we went over, and I'll just show you, I've got a link to their website. Oh, I got to open it. So here's Citrus County's website. And in preparation, we already have started working on a draft page for the city's website, mirroring what they've done, if this is the route that council chooses to take. And so they've got their fee schedule on here. It says to purchase, here you can say, to purchase a daily or annual pass, please visit premium parking website you put here. What they are charging is $10 a day, $25 for a resident annual pass, and 75 for a non-resident annual pass. And the way you register is through your trailer tag or your vehicle tag if you're transporting your kayak or whatever on top of your car and the boat or your truck. But it's limited to one license plate per pass holder. So, and they do it at four different places, McCray's, Hernanda Beach, Fort Island Trail Gulf Beach, and Fort Island Trail Park. What we visited was Fort Island Trail Park and Fort Island Trail Gulf Beach, and I'm going to show you some pictures that we took over there.
All right, Bill. Said, "All right, Bill."
Okay, so here, see Shane back there? This is at the end of Fort Island Trail, the very end. Back behind Shane is the beach area. And then this is at the very end for the boat watch area. So there's kind of like a circle here, like we have behind our sea hall. So when you're coming in this way, you're going to come around, and this camera right here is going to capture your tag. And there will be a live person monitoring these cameras at all times. And it's going to take a picture, you're going to put your boat in. If you don't register to use the service, then you're going to get a violation. You're going to pay the daily fee, and you're going to have to pay a violation. I don't know what their, do you recall what their violation is? $2.50? Okay. So they're going to pay $350.
Get your $10 pass.
Okay, so these are just some markers that the company installed to protect the cameras. I probably should have rotated these pictures before I tried to, I thought I did.
That's great.
Here, there we go. So at this particular location, the only expense that they had was this power pole because they had to power this box which powers the cameras. At our location down here, I believe we have sufficient power not to have to have Duke come in and put another power pole, but that's another thing that we need to look at if you decide to move forward with this. But this premium parking, they installed the cameras. There's no rent, there's no purchase. They own the cameras, they install them. They run the electric under the road here to get over to those cameras. So there was no upfront cost to Citrus County other than that power pole. So there was no upfront cost to Citrus County other than that power pole. Here's a sign that they have there, larger stalls reserved for vehicles. And I have a picture of this somewhere. But you can see they've got trailer parking over here, and then they've got regular vehicle parking over here. But it's clearly marked that those larger stalls are for trailer parking only. And I would recommend some additional signage out in our parking lot if we go this route because we consistently have cars double parking in those trailer parking spots um, on the weekends and even during the week when it's nice outside and people are getting out. So this is the, um, here they have, uh, actually four launches. There's two here and there's two over here. And there's a camera here, there's a, there are two cameras here, and then there is a camera over here. They're kind of hard to see in these pictures, but same thing. The truck's backing in, it captures the tag. If the tag's in the system, you're good to go. Otherwise, you, well, there's your close-up picture of one, one of those cameras, that one that was over on the far right. And that's the one closer up that's in the middle, that's capturing these two launches. And here's the sign. So literally, all you have to do is walk up to this sign, take out your phone, scan the QR code. It opens the app, and I did it with my phone, so I'll show you. So there's the sign, um, park location, and and the company, um, also provides the sign. They design the signs, they send them to us. If we like them, yay. If we wanna change something, they'll do it. And then they, they come out, they erect them, the whole nine yards. So. Oh, yeah, you can, you can, um, there's, and if you don't have a smartphone, there's a phone number here. So you can either send a text to register your vehicle or you can call and speak to a live person, give them your information and your payment information over the phone, whether it's a daily pass or an annual pass. So it's pretty user-friendly. So I did this, I, I clicked on the, I scanned the QR code, I come here, entered my phone number, continued, they sent me a text, uh, with a four-digit verification code, I entered it there. Um, then it brings up, put in your license plate number. You put in your license plate, you move on, and then I didn't get as far as, um, payment information because I wasn't purchasing a pass in Citrus County that day. So, but that's how easy it was to use the app on your phone to pay. And there's my picture with it.
If I could just interject something real quick, Mandy.
Sure, yeah.
Um, Citrus County has it that you can register three trailers under the same pass. So if somebody has two boats on two different trailers.
Oh, I got you.
One, one pass.
It doesn't have to be the same?
Not at the same time. It would be on different days, but they wouldn't have to use the same trailer all the time.
You just have to regi, you just have to register your pass. For each license plate.
Yeah, um.
For each license plate, has to have a separate pass.
Is it a separate pass? I thought it covered, I'm just.
Each, it's, it's very clear. It's only one license plate is allowed per pass.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
I stand corrected, sorry.
That's okay. But I just took a picture of this because I think we need some more signage out here to handle, handle the, um, the parking out here. Yeah, and there is one out here, but if you're like, most people that are gonna come in here and go over here and double park, you don't see the sign because it's down here. So Troy, I'm sure, will, um, get out there and tell us where we need signs. So, uh, so they seem to be really impressed with it. The way they did this is they put everything up November first, but they didn't start violating people until January. So it gave everybody plenty of time to get educated, know what their options were as far as purchasing. And she said they had people purchasing passes in November. You know, they go down there, they see the sign, they, they register, they buy the pass. But if they didn't, they weren't getting a violation because they wanted to give everybody plenty of time to, exactly, acclimate to it and they did, um, you know, different. I think Jan, she said that they, they did some sort of outreach, um, maybe with businesses or something?
They, they put it out everywhere they possibly could, um, to get the word out that they were gonna start charging. Their website, um, I, we didn't hear back from Francine. I, I think she's still out of the office as far as the extent of her outreach, but we would do whatever we can to get the word out. So people were prepared. One thing that I liked, okay, on the circle in that one park, uh, I, I don't remember the name of the park, Mandy, where it was a circle like behind here.
That was the Fort Island Trail.
Where, okay, people come and they like to get close and take a look. But if they stay past a certain amount of time, when they're coming back out, they're gonna get a violation because the system thinks they've done something wrong. Now, we have people that come down to our boat ramp and park where they're not supposed to park. It's for unload, unloading and loading boats. So that would help with that enforcement down here, that people aren't just parking and walking around and preventing the boaters from using that area. Because people can park in our parking lot and walk down to the water. So we don't want to prevent anybody, you know, from being able to just take a look, to sit down at the benches, to get on the deck. But enforcement is all done by this company. This company is the only one that, um, Francine with, uh, Citrus County is aware of and through all her research, that provides this service.
And Jan, isn't this what she gave you?
Yes, she did all the research. She reached out to all these, for lack of a better term, parking companies that provide kiosks and things like that. Their goal was they wanted a mobile app. They did not want a kiosk where paper gets stuck because it's a paper ticket due to moisture. They didn't want to maintain, have to maintain it. Not every company provides maintenance for a kiosk. Everything is automated by, by trailer and, um, the cameras monitor it. The, uh, Citrus County, all they're doing is sitting back and taking in the revenue. The company, Premier Parking, um, is responsible for enforcement, and they do get to keep the violation fees. That's kind of how they get paid. Otherwise, there is no cost to Citrus County. Like Mandy said, the only cost to implement this whole program, besides the outreach and then the advertising, was a twenty-four, twenty-five-hundred-dollar power pole.
So they don't take a cut of the ten dollars?
They do. It's an eighty-twenty split after taxes and fees, regulatory fees and any state or local taxes. So that ten dollars, just to keep round in numbers, works out to be, say, eight dollars. And it's an eighty-twenty split. There is, Francine audits their revenues. They provide a backdoor to their accounting system where she can get in and look at all the transactions to ensure Citrus County is receiving their share, their contracted share. So there is audit, there's monitoring on the side of finance. And there's enforcement that doesn't involve our police department. It's all the, it's like, it's, it, it's like a sunpass. It, it works exactly like a sunpass.
Oh, really? But this is not for cars parking?
No, this has nothing to do with, with parking in our parking lot. This is strictly launched.
With a trailer.
With a trailer and what trans, right. If you don't have a trailer, for example, the kayakers that carry their kayak down.
Yeah.
You're not gonna capture a launch fee from them. You're gonna hopefully trust that they've signed up and paid for a pass or a daily fee.
Unless they drive their vehicle down there and take the kayaks out of their vehicle and there's a tag that the system captures, then.
Can we require that?
Yes, yes.
That you launch, that you can't?
You can't require that they launch it there. You're just gonna get people that come up here that have the lighter ones, they're just gonna tow them down there.
Yeah.
But and the only way, and there's really no way to enforce that. But if they drive their vehicle down there and unload them and the camera catches the license, then, then they have to pay.
Okay. Now, the, the ten-dollar fee that Citrus charges, if we wanted to charge five, we could. If we, if we wanted to charge fifteen, we could.
Whatever amount you, you all decide if you want to charge a larger non-resident fee.
Okay, those are just the numbers that they came up with.
Oh, is that seventy-five dollars for the year or seventy-five dollars?
That's an annual pass.
Okay.
But you can design a fee schedule whatever way you see fit.
Sounds like to me, they basically come in and do everything.
They do everything.
They, they put in the equipment, they put in the cameras, they, you don't have to, no money out of the city's pocket.
The only staff time is finance's time to record the revenue and monitor the collection.
Ms. Odom, would, would it be possible to ask them to come in and give a presentation to us?
I'm sure Francine probably would. We can ask her. Yeah, we can ask her. They, they can come talk to us. The one other thing I wanted to, uh, put out there while we have Andrew here is they sole sourced this because this was the only company that could do everything that they wanted them to do based on their research, to provide the app, the enforcement, the, you know, no maintenance, no purchase of a kiosk, no, you know, because this company does it all. And so I wanted to make sure the council knows that that would be the route that we would want to take if we're gonna mirror what they're doing. Um, and they've already done the research. And I did speak with Andrew briefly about it, so Andrew, if you, you know, he didn't, he didn't think it was a problem.
No, the, uh, the city head in its purchasing policies has a still provider provision. And, uh, obviously, staff has obtained evidence that, um, this is the only company that does it. I don't see any reason why that wouldn't be reliable and meet the requirements of the ordinance.
So I would say, Mandy, so we just don't lag and have another month go by. Maybe possibly invite them to come during our special.
On the twenty-first?
Yeah. See if that works out for them. Chief, Lieutenant Fox, if you would like to give us, uh, your input on a. Lieutenant, I know you're, you're a brilliant public speaker. I, I know you love speaking in front of the public. I'm gonna give you your opportunity.
Did you say it was two fifty for a violation, not three fifty? Two fifty for a first violation, five hundred for a second.
Wow.
And I think that they had an ordinance that they had to enact on that. So it can be wherever you want it to be. But there's no maintenance. If they have a dispute for anything, if somebody stole a tag and they got a violation, said I don't even have a boat, then the company handles all the disputes. We don't have to do anything, so. I think it's a good idea.
I know when, uh, council passes ordinance that puts it on the police to enforce, you say, here, you know, what, what more?
It helps out with.
So it sounds like this one is about as painless to the police as possible to me, it sounds like.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so Vice Mayor, we, um, may ask Mandy during our special meeting to have them come and give us a short presentation. Okay, everybody good with that? Okay, excellent. Yes, please.
I think that it needs to be presented to the people at large, too. They should have an opportunity, we should advertise it because we will have, um, we, we have a sensitive group of people who are using that river. And I think that for it to be successful, we need their support.
I would agree.
This is one of those things, some people will probably have some.
Heartburn.
Yeah. So we'll definitely have it on our agenda, right?
Uh, yeah. Now, we don't need to do anything Monday, but if you want to put this, if you want us to advertise this special council meeting on the twenty-first, we can get it out there that, you know, if Francine agrees to come to that meeting and speak to you guys, try to get the word out to people to come to that meeting. So if they have any questions about Citrus County's experience so far.
Right.
She'll be here.
This doesn't allow us to collect anything for people that are pulling up to our boat ramp, right?
It does if they stay a certain length of time.
No, I mean from the river.
Oh.
No. Now, if they're taking out, if they put in somewhere else and they bring a truck over here with a trailer to pull the boat out, it's gonna capture that, them pulling the boat out of the water.
But just dropping off people, doing business, no.
I like the idea of putting it on the twenty-first because if we put it this coming Monday, it would seem like a short notice for those that would care about.
And we only, really, the only, we only have one agenda item on the March twenty-first council meeting.
Okay.
Where we have the CRA, but only a regular council meeting.
Oh.
So that's right.
Good, all good? Staff, wanna thank you for taking that field trip. I think you might have, uh, come up with the answer here. Okay, we're at number twelve, council comments. Usually start off with Ms. Cabbage on that, Ms. Cabbage?
Um, no comment. Great meeting and shorter than usual, too.
Wow.
I wanna know who's bringing the ark to come get us.
Ms. Kenny?
No comment.
Williams?
Hi.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, great job on all the staff and thank you for a good meeting.
Okay, I have a couple very brief ones that are important. Um, we all know that April first is the beginning of the tuber season. That's when the county begins renting tubes. Jim Poulart has suggested previously that it could be before that the weather remains real good, but April first, the tuber season starts. And April first is always also when our coordinates, coordinates, uh, starts. An important date to keep in mind is on the twenty-fourth of this month. FGUA is meeting at the Boys Club and discussing the, uh, Chatmire conversion of the septic tanks, which, um, that has been brought up. It's also a very, it's a good time to just talk with the FGUA about other topics. One topic you might be interested in is over the next year, the conversion of the wastewater that's being produced outside the city, Rainbow Springs, Ria Vista, High School, Elementary School, State Park. All that wastewater is scheduled within the next year to be headed to our plant. So it might be a good idea if you have any questions about how that impacts the city.
I think the meeting starts at six, right?
Yeah.
Another important thing, uh, the council has spent a lot of time with you. I said I was gonna go meet with the county commission. I've met with the county commissioners at one of their meetings twice since we have, uh, last convened and talked with the commissioners about re-igniting the interest on the Blue Run Park restroom. Have gotten some interest. It's back teed up and it's back under discussion. I also let the commissioners know that we were hoping to have a restroom that was commensurate with the beauty of Blue Run Park. We had a restroom that was just the bare bones minimum for a park that is just about ready to open to the, with Lakouchy State Trail with the tunnel, four million dollar tunnel with the multimillion dollar bridge. To have a, I never said this, but, uh, to have a minimal restroom, we'd like be buying a brand-new pair of slacks. I'm forgetting to use one of your belt loops, you know, it just doesn't, uh, go to not have a nice restroom. So they are, they are with it. So where they're at right now is they know that they have committed X amount of dollars previously, although there is no legal requirement in the original documents that ever said that was a requirement. But they do admit that there has been conversation and, and, um, agreements to that. They also know that, uh, Don Ellen has come up with thirty thousand dollars, which eighteen thousand has been spent on plans. They also know that we. They also know that we suggested we may have some money from the one-twenty-five park to add to the kitty. So where it's at right now is the county is very insistent that the difference between the money that comes up from the city and the county, the difference, and they believe there will be a difference, we do too, that the state or some grant should be a partner in this and to come up with the money. They feel that this park with its connection to the Wipacucci Trails and whatever, that the state should have an interest in us. So where it's at right now, the county is going to work with its agencies and connections to see what they can do, whether it's in this legislative session, next legislative session, or through appropriations next year or grants to come up with the difference between what they're offering and what we have. So if you break it down, nothing's going to happen, certainly this year during the season. The best case scenario would be something would come in the off-season next year if the money comes altogether. But we know how government works. You're optimistic, but it always works a little bit slower than you hope. But I will tell you that there is now, there's a reemergence with the county realizing that something needs to be done with us. So we've made some progress. So we'll see. And I did tell them that we, since we're in on this, that we would like to have a restroom that we feel happy about, we're comfortable with, and we're proud of. And I said, "You should be too. This park is as much to your benefit as it is to us." So we'll see how that goes. I know Commissioner Bryant, I know she's going to shoulder this. Commissioner Zalik has been very interested in this. So I know those two are really keen. What the community could do, those that have connections with members in the community, an email or two or a text to the commissioners letting them know that this restroom is a, something very important to that park. Let them know that there is interest in this. I think would help. I think that would help a lot. That's really, really all I had to say. Got a couple of questions for the chief and Andrew when it's their turn, but that's my report. Okay?
I have one, I'm sorry, I have one comment actually to add, council comment. And that as far as the Turnpike Extension proposed project, something really good did happen last week. And that is that Southwest Florida Water Management District put their two cents in and said they oppose the project, any of the pros, any of the four paths. And that is huge because we know who sits on that board. They are all government, governor-appointed Republicans, okay? So this is awesome. We have a...
Repeat that again, Jim? What was that?
Last week, about ten days ago, it was in the Calistar Banner and in Citrus Chronicle.
Uh-huh, and?
Southwest Florida Water Management District publicly announced that they were against any of the extension plans.
Wow.
Yep, that's huge.
That's good. That's good. One other thing, you just jostled my memory. We all know the Suncoast Parkway, which is a toll road, but separate and distinct from the northern Turnpike Extension, is now meandering its way north. It is completed, I understand, to Highway forty-four, and it's working its way now. If you look at the maps, the projections, there's a map out that's projecting where it will finally connect into nineteen. And this is the Suncoast Highway, not the northern Turnpike Extension. It's going to be, the road right behind us, four eighty-eight. If you get on forty-eight, right behind us, go all the way to nineteen. Somehow, some way, it's going to be coming up right there, right in that area. So four eighty-eight will be a way to get to that Suncoast Highway, which our concern is these little county roads we have are all the little theaters that are going to these toll roads. And the downside for Don Ellen is us becoming a drive-through city where people are simply driving through the city with no business in the city, just trying to go from where they're at to these expressways. But one of the things, when we talked to FDOT recently, they said the northern Turnpike Extension, even if it was approved, you probably wouldn't see anything for up to ten years. They say that's how long it takes to buy the land and do everything you have to do. So those that think that the bulldozers are going to pull up in front of your house next month, you know, it's a good chance it'll be ten years. The Suncoast Parkway was discussed and approved in the nineties, and they're still working on it. So that shows you how long that takes. All right, that's my comments. Let's start. Department heads. I always like to start off with you, Troy, so you don't feel like you're a little man on a totem pole.
Very quick, Ms. E. Comment was made or a request was made earlier to look at removing the tree from the center of Bernie Mill Park. Probably agree with that. And if we can, we'll possibly try to transplant it, but there's a possibility it may not survive.
Is it an oak?
No. It's a cedar tree that was planted with the anticipation that it would eventually be the city's Christmas tree. Problem is, it only grew up about this far and then exploded outward. So it's just a fat, round bush in the middle of the park.
Okay.
So with the council's approval on that, I'll start getting that moved out of there, move that there.
We can always replace the tree. We can always replace it.
Cedars grow very fast.
Right, right. So other than that, I just want to give you a heads up. You've probably already seen it, and your emails are on the website. The Marion Ocala TPO has put together a Commitment to Zero project. And they are having a community workshop, April fourteenth, five thirty PM at the College of Central Florida. And the advertisement is on our city's webpage. So if you can't go in person to give your input about the safety commitments and stuff, there's a link on the webpage. You can submit comments directly to the committee.
Troy, can I just give a heads up what that Commitment to Zero is just real quick? That is a TPO, well, it's actually a state directive, and there is just one woman. They've actually formed a task force in the FDOT to get this. And Commitment to Zero is, we all sadly, realistically understand that it would be a blessing to never have a fatality on any of our roadways. But sadly, that's, you know. But we will try, what the commitment is, and this started back when I was on TPO, is that we will try to work things to see how we can better teach each of us to, when it's raining out, go five miles slower, not to use our cell phones. So it's those types of things. And like one of the recommendations I've made is to, we already have the DARE program in our schools, the fifth graders to not do drugs, is to bring in that Commitment to Zero to help to, I mean, you've already got the police there doing that program. So that's something that we're going to try and implement in, is having the schools also do this. The big businesses, the trucking companies, the police will just be a part of it, the cities. So that's kind of for the citizens to know, that's what the Commitment to Zero is, is for each of us to take our own ownership in driving on the roads and making sure that that number is somebody's family member. It's not just a number. So that's what the Commitment to Zero is all about.
Super.
And the last few things is the grant project for the road assessment has begun. We had a kickoff meeting just a couple of days ago. And the engineers, teams will be, engineer partners will be in the city next week with strange-looking vehicles, taking surveys of the roads, identifying, and getting back to us with our reported material. So hopefully, by the time our budget process really gets in-depth, we'll have that road condition report to help us set up the next five, ten, fifteen-year road repaving expectations on the city maintained roads. And I believe that's it.
Troy, just a couple of questions maybe you know. At the Chamber of Commerce meeting last night, which I attended, I was asked if I knew what was going on on forty-one, north of town on forty, where there's a major land clearing going on there. And also on four eighty-four, somewhere near the airport, there's a major land clearing there. And I was asked if I knew anything whatsoever.
The airports, the airports, the tree, the pine farm. They cut the pine trees down. That's the pine farm. I keep forgetting that stuff.
Yeah, the one up on forty and forty-one there, I don't have a clue. I see the land clearing companies advertising sign out there, but no indicator as to what's there. And so when we find out, please let me know as well.
Manny Kowiczak, on your things to do, just try to find out, because I was asked that question point-blank.
Oh, it's a channel.
Yeah, yeah. I hear it might be some sort of shopping center there, but I, that doesn't make any sense. On forty, up where, forty-one up or forty.
Oh, okay, because I heard that.
They have an advertisement up there that a shopping mall would be coming soon. But then that sign disappeared for several years.
Something's going on there. I just told them I didn't know.
Start a remembrance.
Okay.
Mayor, can we go ahead and address the wall line that we have?
Sure, go ahead.
About signs?
Yeah. The who?
These are the, these are the Blue Run Park, the draft that we have for the signs for the park that Mr. Vivar provided us. Andrew has reviewed these and made some minor edits. And so I just want you all to have a chance to look at this and make sure you're okay with everything before we work with Mr. Vivar to proceed to having these signs made for the park. And I think we were going to do, how many, Troy?
Four, I thought.
Four signs?
Yeah, four.
Andrew, could you point out where your edits are so we don't have to figure this out?
Sure.
You want me to pull up the red line, Andrew?
You could. I can just go through them because they're really adding periods for the most part.
Okay.
I can go through them very quickly. Number three, the original said fires are prohibited except for the purpose of resource management with a state or federal permit. That except seems extraneous because we do cite to exceptions down at the bottom. So it just says fires are prohibited now. So just shortening that rule so it's a little bit snappier. On number ten, this is just combining number ten and eleven on the original draft. The original draft said catch and release fishing is permitted in the interior pond. And number eleven was fishing at the river access ramp is prohibited. It's just combining those to say that catch and release fishing is permitted in the interior pond. Any other fishing is prohibited. So that just re-numbers everything. And then on number twenty-one, it said Florida Chapter seven ninety fifteen. Now it just says Florida statutes, section seven ninety fifteen, city clerk was capitalized. And the final statement, originally it just said, "Don Ellen Ordinance, ORD twenty twenty-two oh two, a citation to that single ordinance, see it for the entire complete park rules." Now it states, "See Chapter forty-six, Article three of the City Code of Ordinances for the Complete Park Rules and Exceptions."
Can you be a little slower than the house fire? Try to write that down.
Sure, sure. It's up there as it stated now, but before what it said is just, "See Don Ellen Ordinance twenty twenty-two zero two." That was the first ordinance. So this change is just written to incorporate, it's under the presumption that you'd be passing those exceptions that we discussed earlier. So it just says, "See the codified version and the citation to the code." Somebody can look it up on Unicode. And those rules there and the exceptions listed for the complete rules. So that's it. So no substantive changes at all.
All right, Ms. Odom, what do we need to do with this?
If we have your blessing to move forward, I don't know that we even need a motion. You tell me and Troy that we can go ahead and work with Bill to get them done. We'll get them done.
Everybody agree? You're going to contact Bill? Going to contact Bill Vivar because he's put a lot of time into this?
The only thing I don't think we should do is, and I know he said it was, have some sitting there in paper. That'll just be paper thrown away. Somebody can...
That's true.
I would maybe tack one up on the board if they really want to go home and read them.
And not worry about the litter.
Yeah, so that's...
Yeah, that was my fault, exactly.
Yeah, I would agree. That's a good thought. Yeah, I probably would.
I mean, I thought it was a good idea, but if they really want to go home and read them. Yeah, they can get, take a picture.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, staff, you have your marching orders. Go forward. Counsel. All right, Andrew, as long as we had your vocal cords warmed up, why don't you just finish your report?
Sure. The only thing I have tonight, I was asked, I know that some council members have done their annual education as far as ethics. And I had gotten a few questions on that. There's some new material in this presentation this year, and so I just wanted to address some of those. And I think it's timely to address them. You all may or may not be aware of what's going on in Sumter County with the arrest of two commissioners for sunshine law violations, criminal prosecution, and they have been removed by the governor. Now, this is something that is very unusual because it was, appears at least in the articles in the newspaper, which is all I've been privy to, it appears to have been premeditated and that they were coordinating and having discussions before meetings via their cellular phone and other mediums. Having the, you know, exactly what the sunshine law is trying to prevent, coordinated efforts to violate the law. But that's a big one because that doesn't happen very often. So keeping with that in mind, I think this year's presentation was very comprehensive. One of the things that was touched on and that I was asked about is at city meetings, one of the things to bring about is because we all have, we all have cellular devices. At meetings where there, and one thing to be mindful of, of course, whenever there is a record that has to do with city business that comes through on a cell phone, anything like that, whether it's a text or some other medium, that does become, of course, a public record. And that may need to be read into the record, especially if sitting into a quasi-additional hearing, something along those lines, because it's something that is coming in. One thing to keep in mind, too, is that the public is able to, and it, this brings, you may have seen some of the presentations by my partner, Cliff Shepard, and I've mentioned it before, note passing, that kind of thing. Kind of an embarrassing example where one council member had passed a note to a meeting calling another council member Judas because that council member was not voting the way they want. Which begs the question, if they thought they were going to vote some other way, was there a sunshine violation in the first place? But the point being, you know, with note passing and other elements there, it's just, that, of course, was a public record. Public saw it, the public asked for it, and then the next day it was in the paper. And I bet that individual and probably wish she didn't slide that note. And so just to bear in mind that perception, of course, again, we all have cell phones for valid reasons to check, you know, what time, emergencies, that sort of thing. But if the public sees you looking at something, they may say, "Hey, is there a public record going on?" And that doesn't mean it would necessarily be disclosed, but would have to be reviewed. So keep that in mind. Another is, one of the things I think that was new in that presentation was just, and it was a really good, it was good to bring up, and I don't see it here, but in some, I've seen in some meetings where council members would whisper back and forth to each other in other jurisdictions. And that's a problem because the public should be privy to everything that's exchanged at a meeting. Otherwise, that can be, even though we're in a sunshine meeting, really happening out of the sunshine if it's pertaining to city business. So just how we interact with each other on the dais is important, I think, was the point that they were trying to make. And that's really all I wanted to touch on. I think those were some good, some good points, considering where we are right now, I think, with kind of the sensitivity of the sunshine law. It's always a big deal, just to bring up that I saw in that presentation. Always a, a big deal, just to bring up that I, that I saw in that presentation. That's all I have. Well, thank you.
Could I add to that comment? Just a few months.
Yes.
Caught this on YouTube. There's actually, it was part of a newscast. In Baton Rouge, a council member was shopping online during a meeting and a presentation. And, and a person who was a presenter actually got, got up and got behind and got it on the, on YouTube video. I mean, like, what am I thinking? Why are they there?
So the two commissioners that have been taken down by the governor, what is the possible penalties that they're looking at?
That would be fines and, and jails because it's a second degree misdemeanor.
Well, maybe I need to be careful because while the lady was giving her presentation about the art thing, and I knew I had the, I had the letter about the date of the festival, I did take my phone out and put it on my calendar. I guess I didn't remember, right?
That, that's okay. I, I think what they were speaking of more is if there's a hearing, something in that lines where if, or if it's during public comment and somebody sends a text message or there's a message from the public that comes in, then, you know, there are certain times where that would need to be disclosed. You're talking about putting something in a calendar.
Yeah, that's all right.
That's something different. Now, if it's in your calendar, that's a public record if somebody wanted to see that, since it's an entry that has to do with city business. But that's not, I think, the point what they were trying to get at as far as disclosures and having to, you know, state to the whole body as to what, what you were reading or looking at.
Okay, just real quick, like, I wrote down, I wrote down FGUA meeting, I wrote down social, and then I put them in. So do I need to have Mandy make a copy of it for the public record?
So the standard is to.
If I was my doodles, they can have them too.
Right, the standard is, and I, I don't want to give you one of those kind of wishy-washy depends answers. In this case, it's, you're keeping records, it's whenever it's, the exact words are, it's been a while since I've looked at it, so I might kind of get a little bit off, but it's to memorialize and, you know, make a record of that information. So oftentimes, personal notes and that type of thing, if it's not meant to, you know, create a record, that does not become a record. But if you're, in this case, if you're writing down calendars and dates that you will, you know, be attending, or, I guess the point is, or what?
I'm so confused now.
When it, when you're trying just to, to make a record of where you will be, you know, then that generally is a record because you're, it's not something that you're just going to be looking at to refresh your recollection. Does that make sense?
Yeah, because I would be using it to refresh my recollection. I mean, why else would I put something in my calendar? Anyway, figure that one out and put demify it for Valerie later.
Sure. I mean, if it's a calendar that's maintained by the city of where you have to be and that sort of thing that you are providing, if it's just a personal note to yourself, be at some place for city business, that probably would not be a record.
Okay, then I'm good. So I could take notes to.
I take notes on my gym.
I mean, I take notes so that I understand what has just been said. Basically just trying to shortcut so I can remember.
And those may or may not be a, a public record. We can talk about that in the future. There's some, some standards for, depending on how you intend to use those notes.
They can't, they can't.
Memorialize.
They couldn't interpret them.
You know, I was thinking the same thing always. I mean, I actually can see the notes I keep.
This is really something because when I see a council member out, like maybe in the grocery store, I saw Louise one day at Save-A-Lot parking lot, and then we were actually running from each other.
I know, it's the start of Spain.
Trying not to be able to say it.
Andrew, before we move on, I would ask one more question at the chamber meeting. Icicles, motorized bicycles and blue one, battery operated, one matured. Now the rage of the world, are they, according to our rules, are they allowed?
No.
No.
Motorized.
Okay. Are they allowed outside the park? In other words, once you leave the park and get on the Wapakouche Trail?
Within the actual rules themselves, motorized vehicles are prohibited beyond designated parking areas, and these rules apply within the park.
Okay, all right. Have the answer. Andy, why don't you pick who the department head, you want to go next? I have no idea who's chomping at the bit and wants to get going.
If I can just say two things.
Yeah.
And then we'll move on. You all will see in your email that on March 24th, there's the grand opening and the ribbon cutting at the Trail Connector on Citrus County side.
Oh, yeah, that's right. That's right, yeah. I saw that.
10:30, 11:30?
I bet, is he, 10:30 to 11:30?
Yeah. So we have, as staff, me, Michelle, Troy and the chief have participated in a couple of different phone conferences with DOT, the TDC, Marion County, people, just in, in an effort to come together and, and make it a coordinated effort. So we're doing some things for them to help them out with staging and things like that. And of course, the chiefs coordinating with Citrus County for any kind of traffic impact and traffic control. So that is on the 24th. That same morning, Michelle and I have election training at the Wesley Will Cox's office in Ocala. So we won't be there for the actual event, but we'll be helping get everything ready leading up to that.
I have training.
But with this being an election year, there's something that I don't think we need to forfeit in this. And it's really important that we get brushed up on, you know, the election laws.
So it's over there by the Sunoco Station?
Yes, sir.
Mm-hmm.
And on, don't forget, 3/26, it is Marion County Day. That's when we're gonna have our booth over there, our conservation booth. And I've received a lot of really good stuff from several members of RRC in the form of photos and videos and handouts and displays and so it's.
Still want my kayak?
Sure, yep. So it's, so that, that's all I have. So Georgina?
Sure. Well, I just want to take the time to, to thank the residents that came up and said something positive about our department. And I, I can't express enough how, how much gratitude to that because our department has gone through a setback and we're just working through it. But I want to reiterate that I've gotten a lot of support from council, from staff, from community partners, from contractors, firms that work with us. It's been an overall support to the department. We have a temp right now from Express that has been helping us. And we have a new hire starting on Monday, which I'm very happy about.
Not the young lady?
No, the temp, no. But we have this, this new hire, it's gonna be, we're, we're really looking forward to it. So, I mean, our staff is really kicking, kicking.
I always have good.
The bucket and helping out.
It's all about teamwork.
It's all about teamwork.
Yes, ma'am.
And yes, that's part of our staff. I can't, I can't, I can't let her go.
Teresa?
I know she retired, but she is part of our family. So she's been our, our trainer and our guardian angel.
Teresa?
Yes.
Okay, that's wonderful.
And she's, she's going to be training our new staff member next week. So she's gonna be fully.
Whatever, right? She was.
Because she's in Mississippi.
She's from Mississippi. A part-time, temporary capacity to work remotely to help Georgina get through this training.
That's nice.
And not only that, but she's been doing a lot of auditing along with staff to get everything back under control. So it's, I mean, it's been an overall support.
Success.
And I can't, I can't stress enough how wonderful of a group we have.
That's so touching.
How's your schooling going? How's your schooling?
Schooling is good. It's, it's nerve wracking, but it's good.
And how many hours are you taking right now?
I'm taking three, three classes.
So you go twice, twice two evenings a week?
Well, it's online. Everything is online, so.
She's a straight A student. I'm so proud.
So far, so far. I will be doing a research paper soon, and I think I'm gonna be reaching out to our, to our Mr. Bill Bibber for some assistance with the.
Are you really excited about it? Your, your lips and your blood and everything?
Yes, it is.
Yeah?
I mean, I'm, I'm loving my job.
All right, what else you have for us?
That's pretty much all I had to say for today. We'll have a, we will have a full report of community development on Monday, but.
Chief, did you have something?
Do I?
Chief?
Yeah.
Yeah, come on.
Come on down.
Come down.
Boy, I am excited about the new Larry Jackson escape.
Hello, chief.
Hey, chief.
Hello, people, council.
Hi.
How are y'all doing tonight?
Oh, we're just wonderful.
Loving keeping.
Few things. We have made 145 vehicle stops during the month of February. We did 68 marine vessel stops. Our business checks, we did 518 business checks. But one of the business checks resulted in possibly a burglary in progress being stopped. Had one at the front door, one at the back door, they was dressed in black. And the stopping of those revealed a lot of drugs, a lot of paraphernalia that has probably come from different other burglaries, a lot of phones, cell phones. So that was a very good, on one of the officers. And we did arrest 11 different people during the month, so our clearance rate was 78% of the month of February. So the next, Troy and I have made contact with the red, green and yellow light people, our red lights, and got some good news. I don't like to give dates, but apparently in the near future, they're gonna put batteries at the four of our red lights. And that way, if the power goes off, the battery will kick them on.
That's absolutely outstanding.
That'll be in the very near future. Also, if we have traffic diverted from 200 to 484, I will notify all council members that this has happened in the future.
And the agency that created the situation outside the city will notify you.
Yes, that's how I notify y'all. Now, the other day, the large portion of that too come from 40. They had an accident on 40 and diverted the traffic this way. So anyway, and the other thing is, last thing, is the parks have come in for our speed trailer. And hopefully by, in the morning, sometimes Troy and I can, especially Troy, appreciate his help into this, have the speed trailer up and operational. We're trying to get it up and operational by the weekend. But I know Troy's leaving, and I don't think it's that complicated, but it's gonna be time consuming. So the speed trailer will be ready hopefully this weekend.
The speed sound that goes beep, 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 beep. Not that we do it wrong. You know, it tells you how fast you're going.
Oh, oh, okay. Oh, no.
Yeah, we're gonna have it on Bostick for the city council member that lives over there.
Maybe zoom it, I'm telling you. Maybe trying to, maybe, maybe zoom it.
So that's all I have.
Any, any questions? I have one. One, one more thing that was just brought to me at the Chamber of Commerce. I got peppered pretty good, obviously, by questions. One of the directors felt it's a, a business owner within the city that our left turn light on 41 in Pennsylvania, sometimes during the height of traffic, does not allow enough people to make a left-hand turn to go south on 41. That maybe four or five cars can get through there, and that's kind of what's backing the traffic up because there's not enough time for the left-hand turn. So that was just brought to my attention, and I know, Troy, you are talking with FDOT regularly about the crosswalk. I don't know if that's something that can be brought up. So chief, if you don't mind, I'll answer this one.
Absolutely.
I do have an answer for you.
Marion County Traffic Light Division maintains our traffic lights and does the programming as directed by FDOT. We've recently been working with the Marion County Traffic Division and FDOT to give them access to fiber optics to control that switch system from the DOT office. We'll be able to monitor it with a camera and change the lighting to accommodate the traffic flow based on hurricane evacuations or whatever's going on for that day for that particular reason. But that's something we've, we started with that communication probably six months ago, and now there's a new manager and director of the Marion County Traffic Light Division who has picked it up and continuing with it. So right after our meeting on Monday is when I got word about the battery backups. Surprisingly, they have been delivered, and now they're working on funding for the battery packs themselves. So that's three to four months max, hopefully. That's their target. And as soon as we can get a way to figure out to give FDOT communication access to that light, that hopefully will help us resolve our problems.
Lieutenant Voxer, chief, you travel the roads all the time. I travel that particular intersection several times a day. And I find oftentimes when that intersection is busy, if you're stopped behind the railroad track, it's usually the cars in front of railroad track to the light that can make the left-hand turn.
Exactly.
Then you're stuck for another go around, you know? So most of the time, it's not a problem, but when the traffic's heavy, you're, you're really, you're gonna have to at least wait one cycle because there's not enough people that can turn.
Well, at the railroad tracks, you have to make a decision because I'm there all the time. Either I'm gonna turn left, oh, can't make it, or go straight.
Yeah.
But it is.
And I, I really think because of that, that left turn is what's kind of aggravating a little bit, people backing up. They can't, they can't clear out at that intersection.
I totally agree.
So I just thought I'd bring it to your attention.
It's really bad when people are getting off work like four or five in the afternoon.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I think Ms., I feel, I feel let me out today. Coming from Bostick Street.
That goes straight.
Thank you, chief. Excellent report. Thank you. Ms. Odom? Ms. Odom, next?
Yes.
Stan?
You save the best for last.
I did. Councilwoman Hynscher mentioned at the beginning of the meeting that I placed a budget calendar at your seats. This is, you know, pretty much our script for the next few months, both for me as well as council and the meetings that we want to schedule. So we're looking at, and this follows last year. The only thing that's changed is the date because the calendar changed. So last year, the first budget workshop I would leave was the 23rd, now the 22nd. So unless council wants to change something, we'll try and follow this, and it can be changed, you know, any workshop can be moved to a different day. But this is really the beginning of, of our budget season and the marching orders that the departments will have to move forward.
Everybody watch out for, I guess that's July 6th for the budget workshop.
And that July 6th one is really one of the most important because at the council meeting on July 11th, you all have to certify your taxable value. So that's why we try and have at least a couple of workshops before you state what millage rate you want to propose, which of course, like last year, seven mils was proposed, you can't go higher. That means we have to at least bring in a budget at seven mils. And of course, we try and at least, you know, work towards keeping everything the same. And, and as, as far as I'm concerned, that's not gonna change this year. It will be the same millage rate, but once we get all the numbers, that's when things start falling out. And of course, it'll be, it'll be presented to council, you know, for your direction. So I, the only budget workshop I wouldn't want to change is July 6th, if at all possible. We still have some more time. I really have until, I believe it's August 4th is the very last day that we can certify your taxable value. So there is time, but you have to keep in mind all the data entry and all the input and everything the department. and everything the department heads are still working on to get to a budget document that we can present. So there is flexibility, not a whole lot.
I just making sure that everybody knew that for the holidays and such.
And the second thing I wanted to bring to your attention, EV charging stations. Councilwoman, coverage had sent an article that the state was going to receive federal funds. Those federal funds won't be available for quite some time because the state has to formulate a plan to use those funds. But in the meantime, we contacted Duke Energy and we're going to move forward with them and have a meeting in the very near future. And hopefully, you know, have some charging stations not too far down the road.
We're going to need them with the purse again. About being electrically...
And the program that Chief has is called a DC Fast Charging Program, which it's 30 minutes, cars are charged. It's not strictly limited to one make or model of a car, such as a Tesla, it's for all electric.
Good, because that's what I was coming to.
I'm telling you, you got that right.
I have to go buy one.
Yeah, and that's all I have, can...
Excellent. Ms. Odom?
I was just looking at some dates because we want to, if we want to get the word out about the launch fees and the consideration of that, we don't have enough time to get anything in the Riverland. If we're going to do that on the special meeting on the 21st, we would only have time to get one ad in three days before.
Maybe contact Sean and see if he'll put an article in.
Well, that's the thing, we would have to have, you'd have to, the first opportunity for us to get anything in the Riverland is the 18th, which is three days before the meeting on the 21st. So can we move that discussion to the April 6th workshop and ask that soon we come then? That gives us three weeks, the 18th, the 25th, and the 1st, to get the word out through the Riverland and get the, because they publish once a week on Friday. So if we could get Sean to print something, the 18th, the 25th, and the 1st, that would be three weeks it's advertised in the newspaper prior to the workshop. Plus, we'll have something on the website. I just think that that's one notice in the newspaper three days before the meeting just isn't enough.
You suggesting not have the presentation at the special?
Right, postpone it until the first, the workshop in April. To give us more time to get word out.
Okay. Council, what do you think?
That's fine.
And I agree, this will have some emotionality to it. So we need to handle this one carefully. Okay, who else, Ms. Odom, needs to speak?
Anybody else?
Anybody else?
No.
All right, we have department heads who are all done. Andrew, you're finished? Okay, for you diehards, we're at number 15. We have public comments, anyone in the audience would like to speak. Ms. DiArvo?
Brittany DiArvo, 116, it's 1 Camp Drive. I want to revisit that number 6, the ordinance for the business tax receipt, and just put a thought out there concerning the rentals. Because in my world that I work, in the business world, if you have rentals, whether it's 1 or 15 or whatever, you're considered, they're considered investment properties, not business. And where that could run into a little snag, right now, the IRS is tracking and they're sharing information with municipalities and state and so forth. If you're considered a business and you are not a legal entity such as a corporation, then the IRS would be looking as a business, not only for you to pay income tax, but self-employment tax at 15.2 or 3%, it's over 15% in addition to your income tax. If you have investment properties, we have clients at the tax office has 15, 20 rentals. They do not pay any self-employment tax. They strictly just pay income tax on their rentals after they've subtracted the expenses. So you might want to change the verbiage or kind of look at that again. And I do know for short-term rentals, yes, going to the county, if a short-term rental, $6 or less, you pay a 4% tax to the county, and then you pay 7% tax to the state of Florida. So I would just caution you with that as you're looking to that and you might want to revisit that. Thank you.
Andrew, this would kind of, this balls heading your way.
Sure, so BTR is be assessed on individuals, it's not just related to entities. So, but there are some things with the BTRs I do want to talk to Mandy about on a separate note. So that is an ordinance I just, I do want to discuss with staff a little bit, but not for that reason.
Other questions?
No, 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 no.
Thank you very much for your insight, we appreciate that. Yes, Ms. Dunn?
Kathy Dunn, 1138 600th Drive. I was a little bit concerned about feeling like the comment that we want positive comments only when we come up here to the podium. I feel like the citizens come here to represent the citizens' point of view. And it's the negative comments or suggestions are not meant to be personal. They are meant to be constructive. And we could sit at home and not do anything and just let everybody run the city that's sitting up here. But I feel that I represent the citizens, I'm in four different civic groups, and I am giving feedback, not just for me, but for the people that I talk to on a daily basis and the businesses I support. So I don't want to see a feeling that when we come up here and we make a suggestion, it's a negative comment. It is not personal, it is meant to be constructive and to help the city to grow in a way that the citizens would like to see it grow. And we don't want to see a feeling like the staff feels like we're attacking them just because we make a suggestion. I hate to see that happen because we are giving of our time as well to make this town in a better place. And I'm saying that from the heart. So the other thing is, I would like to see a city council member take this vacation rental thing on as a task force, inviting citizens that it affects because our neighborhoods are becoming hotel, vacation rental hotels. And if you live next sort of one and impact your quality of life and probably would make you want to move out of our city. And I feel that we need more homeowners and less landlords and renters. So thank you.
Anyone else would like to say anything before we wrap this up? Pull that microphone down so we can hear you real good.
Have to pull the gus.
There we go.
Okay, I can reach it now. I would like to thank the lady that just left this dais for her comments because they're very important. I live, as do you, in a neighborhood where there are a lot of people that are renting outhouses in short terms. And it does have a tendency to devalue our properties. I'm not going to move because of it because you aren't going to take me off that curb on the river that I fell in love with and bought. And I don't think you will either, but we need to protect those things from misuse. And I don't know that we're doing as effective a job at that as we should be because there are people moving in and out of exceedingly short-term rentals, a few weeks, a month at the most, but down into weeks and days in a neighborhood that is supposed to be a residential area. And I'm having a little difficulty dealing with that. I've been there a little over 20 years, almost 25. And I don't want to see it fall further apart. Thank you.
Anyone else? Council, do you have anything to say? We have a motion to adjourn.
Sweet dreams.
All in favor?
Sweet dreams, I.